Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved.
First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then, decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So, pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then, all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the consent agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, I'm John Doe, speaking on item 5, and I agree with approving the contract. Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sandiegach곡.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the register button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the board chamber? No problem. Just pick the in-person option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit register, and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak.
And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So, you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off-topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda items' recommendations, because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to room 302, or the fourth-floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
Good morning. I will now call the September 30th, 2025 San Diego County Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting and Fire Protection District Meeting to order. We would like to take a moment to acknowledge the land we call home. There are communities in the San Diego region that face unjust conditions and circumstances related to the environments in which they live. The tribal nations of the San Diego region are an example of one community that has historically faced such injustices. We acknowledge the harmony that existed between the land nature and its original peoples who have since endured displacement, persecution, and systemic oppression. We pay our respect to the unceded territory and homelands of the 18 tribal nations in our region, the most indigenous county in the United States, from four cultural groups. We aspire to learn from indigenous traditional knowledge and experiences in undoing the injustices of the past. Andrew, please call the role for today's session.
Thank you, Tara Lawson-Reemer. Supervisor Anderson.
Here.
Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
Chair Proton McGeeery.
Here.
Vice Chair Montgomery-Step.
Here.
Chair Lawson-Reemer.
Here. We will now have Dr. Jamie Gates deliver the invocation and Maria Valarde Cochadorian, sorry, apologies, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Good morning, neighbors. I'm Jamie Gates, and I live in National City. I work in Point Loma. My wife, Michelle, is the president of the school board in National City and an eighth-grade teacher in Imperial Beach. So I'm a person of the county, and I want to thank you for the work you do for the common good. The prayer I bring with you is from Northern Ireland, Ireland, where I was this summer studying peacemaking amongst those who know how difficult it is to make peace in a very divided space. Hear this prayer from the deep well of Celtic Christians. For all of us, God encircle us with your presence. Keep joy within, keep bitterness out. Keep generosity within, keep greed out. Keep love within, keep self-seeking out. Keep light within, keep darkness out. And for peacemakers, God, keep wisdom within, keep folly out. Keep strength within, keep weariness out. Keep hope within, keep despair out. Keep light within, keep darkness out. For all of us, God, encircle us with your presence. Keep wholeness within, keep sickness out. Keep hope within, keep despair out. Keep peace within, keep turmoil out. Keep light within, keep darkness out. In the name of all that is sacred, amen.
Okay. Thank you. We now proceed with the proclamations. The first proclamation will be given by myself honoring Band Books Week. Accepting the proclamation will be Miguel Acosta.
Good morning. Band Books Week is more than just a celebration of literature. It is a reminder of one of our most basic freedoms: the freedom of expression, the First Amendment protection to read, to write, and to think freely. But across the country, we've seen more and more attempts to take books off the shelves, books that share diverse voices, books that question the status quo, books that make us think. And these efforts are not just about books. They are fundamentally about science silencing people and ideas. Censorship does not make us safer. It makes us smaller. It denies all of us the chance to learn, to grow, to wrestle with new ideas. The best way to prepare for the world we share is not to narrow our vision, but to expand it, to give ourselves the tools to ask hard questions and see the world through different points of view. Here in San Diego County, we are proud to stand on the side of freedom, and we are proud of the people who make that freedom real every single day: our county library From storytime to job resources to lifelong learning, they open doors for millions of residents. They make our libraries safe, welcoming places where everyone can find themselves represented and inspired. Our librarians are defenders of access, and in this way, defenders of liberty and democracy. So this week and every week, let us defend the freedom to read, let us fight to protect access to diverse ideas, and let us stand against censorship wherever it appears. Because the health of our democracy depends not on silence, but on conversation, not on fear, but on understanding, not on banning books, but on opening minds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to say a couple words?
I would love to.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Chair Lawson-Reemer, and to the entire Board of Supervisors for the continuing support of the county library. I'm joined this morning by several library professionals who, in addition to their daily duties to open libraries and have us function wonderfully, they serve on our Intellectual Freedom Committee and very much involved in providing access. We're joining libraries across the country celebrating Band Book Week, a reminder that the freedom to read is one of our most essential and cherished rights. Everyone deserves the opportunity to choose books that speak to their experiences, challenge their ideas, or introduce them to new perspectives. Our 33 branches, 100 little free libraries, and digital library ensure that books and resources are available to everyone, everywhere. Through partnerships, we connect readers to millions of titles throughout the state of California. Together, let's celebrate the freedom to read and the many ways our library helps keep that freedom available to everyone in our county. Thank you very much.
In the front.
In the front. Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you so much. Our second proclamation will be given by Vice Chair Montgomery-Step honoring Kinship Care Month. Accepting the proclamation will be Mary Guin.
Okay, come on up. While you're walking. Good morning, everyone. I'm very proud to recognize the importance of Kinship Care Month. Kinship care is when relatives, often grandparents, aunts, uncles, or even older siblings step into care for children when their parents are unable to. The impact of having related caregivers goes beyond simply providing a place to stay. It offers stability, love, and a connection to family and culture during one of the most difficult times in a child's life. Kinship care keeps families together. It allows children to remain with people they know and trust, which can significantly reduce trauma. When a child is cared for by someone who looks like them, understands their needs, or even speaks their language, it improves their emotional well-being and leads to better long-term outcomes compared to traditional foster care. But while kinship caregivers are doing heroic work, many are doing it with very limited support. They face financial, legal, and emotional challenges, often with little warning and even less preparation. It can be an overwhelming and isolating time for these families and individuals who step up to take care of a child. However, it is our responsibility as a community and as policymakers to ensure that they are not doing this alone. I grew up hearing the saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." I wholeheartedly believe each of us has a role in shaping the future of our young people, and we must show up for them every single day. I'm proud to highlight the work of the county's Department of Child and Family Well-Being, which continues to support kinship families in our community. The work is never easy, but it is absolutely essential, and we must support it in every way that we possibly can. We must invest in resources, advocacy, and systems that honor and uplift kinship families. Because when we support kinship caregivers, we're also helping children stay connected to their roots, staying connected to their identity and to their future. With that, let me read the final line of the proclamation. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Chair Tara Lawson-Reemer and all of the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this 30th day of September 2025 that we commend the Department of Child and Family Well-Being for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County, and do hereby declare this month to be Kinship Care Month throughout San Diego County.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery-Step and members of the Board of Supervisors. It is my absolute honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Child and Family Well-Being Department. Child and Family Well-Being strives every day to ensure the safety, stability, and well-being of children in San Diego County. This month, even though I think every month is Kinship Care Month, we especially recognize the unique role of kinship caregivers, grandparents, relatives, and family friends who step forward to provide children with love, security, and connection. In San Diego County, approximately 48% of the children and youth in foster care are placed with kin, and thousands more children outside of foster care are cared for by relatives and close family friends. These placements, as Vice Chair mentioned, preserve cultural heritage, maintain family ties, and strengthen children's sense of belonging. Child and Family Well-Being is committed to preserving kinship connections. We collaborate with caregivers, community organizations, and other county departments to meet family needs, reduce adverse childhood experiences, and ensure families remain together whenever possible. While child protection remains vital, we recognize that strengthening kinship networks and connecting families to resource helps children thrive and prevents unnecessary foster care placements. By working together, we build a community where families have the support they need to succeed. Today's proclamation not only honors the dedication of kinship caregivers, but also acknowledges the collaborative effort in our community to ensure that children and youth in San Diego County grow up safe, supported, and nurtured. On behalf of the Child and Family Well-Being Department, thank you for recognizing the extraordinary contributions of kinship caregivers and for supporting our collective work to keep children connected to their families, cultures, and communities. It is now my absolute pleasure to introduce Ms. Mary Guin, a kinship caregiver, to say a few words.
So, hi. I'm Mary Kelly Guin, and I have been raising this handsome young man since 2013. I got a phone call. I had five minutes to make my decision, and here we are. First of all, I want to say thank you to Monica Montgomery-Step, I have to get the sequence correct, for putting us on the map. You know, we're kind of the silent part of the community. Everybody knows about foster care, but very few people know about kinship care. But now we're on the map. We name it, we claim it, and we're going to take a bigger spot in the spotlight. So, thank you for this proclamation. It means a lot to me and the community. I'm only accepting it on the part of my fellow sisters and brothers that are doing the same work that I am. I cry every time I get happy, and I'm extremely happy today. So, thank you very much.
The third proclamation will be given by Vice Chair Montgomery-Step and Supervisor Desmond honoring National Service Dog Month. Accepting the proclamation will be Kyle Kensing. I feel like Supervisor Guir is very excited. Did you bring the dogs?
Yes.
Oh.
His name is Docket.
Docket.
As agenda, yes. Appropriate. Well, I want to say thank you and good morning to everyone. It is my honor, along with Supervisor Montgomery-Step, today to recognize September as National Service Dog Month. All right. We have Kyle Kensing. He's the Director of Communications. Dawn Rudolph, she's a volunteer puppy raiser. Who wants to volunteer to be a puppy raiser? And Docket, here we go. Docket, he is a four-month-old future service dog. So I want to welcome and thank you, everyone, for traveling here today. Founded in 1975, Canine Companions created the modern service dog concept for people with disabilities. This year, this national nonprofit is celebrating 50 years of service dogs. In the United States, there's over 70 million adults that live with disabilities, yet there's only about 16,000 service dogs available, highlighting a significant and growing need. Canine Companions created the first service dog program for people with physical disabilities and remains a leader in San Diego County today. And you're in Oceanside? Is that right?
Me too.
Is it Oceanside? Okay. So they honor this powerful bond that humans and canines have and affirm our commitment to building an inclusive community for all, including individuals with disabilities. This nonprofit provides highly-trained service dogs and lifetime support, completely free of charge, helping individuals achieve greater independence. So congratulations on your 50 years of service, and I'm going to turn it over to my colleague now, Supervisor Monica Montgomery-Step.
All right. Good morning again, everyone, and thank you so much, Supervisor Desmond. I'm happy to be presenting this proclamation with you. Really nice to collaborate on such a positive recognition. Who doesn't love dogs? Especially puppies and their deep purpose for our residents. It's an honor to co-present this proclamation. Today, we celebrate the profound impact of service dogs during National Service Dog Month and the wonderful organization Canine Companions that helps make it all possible. Dogs are more than just our furry friends. They come highly skilled and trained to respond to real crises for so many people. The supervisor said that over 70 million adults live with disabilities. We have much less canines available for them to do this, so we have a lot of work to do. But a service dog brings hope to those who may feel hopeless, and it's such a beautiful reputation. We're always grateful for anyone or any animal who comes in to bring us joy in these chambers. So, thank you so much for being here, for adults, children, and veterans with disabilities. Service dogs offer daily support and renewed confidence. With all the amazing things a service dog can bring, we're deeply grateful for the work that Canine Companions provides to countless individuals and families. Obtaining a service dog can be extremely expensive, and there's a national shortage, as we know, of trained and accredited service dogs. Less than 1% of the potential demand for this for this critical accommodation. Canine Companions offers their services free of charge to people across the U.S. and are proud to honor them as they equip individuals with the independence and dignity needed to live fulfilling lives. So, as we mark National Service Dog Month, we encourage everyone to celebrate Canine Companions and really the shining stars that make this work possible, the service dogs. And today, Docket. Partly, we ask our community to respect the public access rights of those who rely on service dogs every day. And so with that, I'll read the final line of the proclamation. Be it proclaimed by Chair Lawson-Reemer and all of the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this 30th day of September 2025 that we commend Canine Companions for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County, and do hereby declare this month to be National Service Dog Month throughout San Diego County. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for recognizing this September as National Service Dog Month. And it means quite a bit right now and right here to be receiving this proclamation. Right now, because this is indeed the 50th anniversary of Canine Companions, 1975, our first ever service dog, Abdul, was paired with his companion, and since then, we now have 8,300 and counting teams in our history, including more than 2,800 currently nationwide. And San Diego County in particular, recognizing Canine Companions means quite a bit, because our Southwest Training Center is located in Oceanside, and this is such an exciting and meaningful proclamation to us that I actually almost began my remarks before these supervisors. I apologize for that, but thank you so much for your very kind comments. I was very anxious, very excited to discuss how much this meant to us here in San Diego County. Recognition from one of the nation's most vibrant counties helps further our mission. Raising awareness in the public about what true service dogs do and the need for both more community involvement and increased accessibility is invaluable. As mentioned, more than 70 million Americans have a disability, but fewer than 1% have service dogs. Canine Companions aims to grow access to service dogs for adults, children, and veterans with disabilities, but we cannot do it without public support. Canine Companion's service dogs are trained in more than 40 tasks, skills, or cues aimed to help people live more independent lives. All our service dogs are provided completely free of charge to the client, thanks in no small part to the tireless efforts of our volunteers like Dawn, who's with me here today, and of course, with Docket. Dawn is a volunteer puppy raiser, co-raising her adorable guest, Docket. He's a future service dog who, at 16 to 18 months, will enter professional training. Events like today are vital in Docket's development, helping Docket socialize and learn tasks in a public setting that will help him once he graduates and is paired with his client. Docket will be a big part of the San Diego County community as a partner pup with the University of San Diego School of Law. He follows in the very big paw steps of Amicus, a July graduate now working as a facility dog in the District Court of Arapahoe County, Colorado. Amicus provides support to victims and witnesses of traumatic events in the courthouse and recently visited students at Evergreen High School following this month's horrific tragedy there. Amicus and other facility dogs demonstrated the positive impact that they can make in their communities, in addition to the many functions that service dogs provide to help their partners live more fulfilling and independent lives. Thank you again to Supervisor Montgomery Stepp and Supervisor Desmond. Thank you to the County of San Diego, and thank you to everybody who's supported these 50 years of Canine Companions in furthering our mission and helping continue this life-changing work. We appreciate you, and we couldn't do it without you. Thank you so much.
Accepting the proclamation will be Carly Starr Niles.
All right, come on down. Another great Oceanside organization, appreciate it. Good to see you, Carly. All right, hello, hello, hello. Angela. All right, good morning. Again, it is my honor to recognize Oceanside Community Television, K-O-C-T. Welcome. The five this morning was disastrous coming down here, but thanks for making it. So, we have the Executive Director, Carly Starr Brullo Niles, Carly here, Angela Miranda, she's the station manager, and Linda Williams, the producer at K-O-C-T. K-O-C-T has actually been the voice of North County and a trusted media resource for the community. And I'm proud to say our office has supported them with grants for this amazing organization. For over 40 years, K-O-C-T has been Oceanside's award-winning, I'm sorry, for over 40 years, K-O-C-T has been Oceanside's award-winning source for unbiased, engaging, and local community television. They produce true community storytelling, from live city council coverage to powerful documentaries, and K-O-C-T brings Oceanside's stories to life with depth, heart, and purpose. Their public broadcasting program streams 24/7 on Cox TV and worldwide at koct.org, keeping everyone informed and inspired and connected in North County. The K-O-C-T crew, they focus on where local voices matter, whether it's a lifeguard, public service announcements, local arts, veteran stories, youth programs. K-O-C-T champions every corner of the community. Like I said, they've been award-winning, community-focused, future-driven communication. They do a fantastic job. I see them just about at every event up in Oceanside and working seven days a week, 24 hours a day. They cover topics from mental illness awareness to emergency preparedness, storytelling that sparks change and fosters community connection. So, whereas the County of San Diego, we are committed to recognizing and honoring those organizations who are dedicated to the best ideals of public service, and K-O-C-T is one such worthy organization. So, now therefore, here Carly, I'll give you this to hold up. There we go. Therefore, be it proclaimed by myself and all the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this 30th day of September 2025 that we commend K-O-C-T for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County, and do hereby declare today to be K-O-C-T Day throughout San Diego County. Give me a hand. Are you going to speak?
We just wanted to thank the county supervisors for your daily efforts. It's not for the faint of heart, that's for sure. And for County Supervisor Jim Desmond, who has always believed in our mission statement. We are a PEG channel. We were designed in this country to inform, educate, and be the voice of the people. So, your support is needed in this landscape more than ever. It's an honor, and this moment is for everyone. It's for every person who's walked through a building like this or stood up and fought for what they believed in, and I think we should keep PEG channels going in this country. And we thank you so much. We thank and celebrate with the city of Oceanside and all of North County, because we are the voice of North County, our Board of Supervisors, our Board at K-O-C-T Television, Team K-O-C-T, and every person who ever needed a spotlight and to be heard. So, let's keep telling stories, and we thank you from the bottom of our heart for watching and listening. So, thank you very much.
And the final proclamation will be given by Chair Protam Agiri honoring Maria Velarde Cachadorian. Accepting the proclamation will be Maria Velarde. Thank you.
Today is my true honor to be presenting this proclamation to Maria Velarde Cachadorian, who is retiring after nearly 40 years of public service. Maria Velarde Cachadorian will retire from the city of Chula Vista on October 2, 2025, after a distinguished 38-year career, leaving behind a legacy of service that will benefit the city, the region, and its residents for generations to come. It is really special to be able to present this proclamation during Hispanic Heritage Month to a trailblazer who was born in Tijuana, Mexico, and who, with her family, immigrated to the United States when she was an infant, settling in my former city, Imperial Beach. Maria began her distinguished career here at the County of San Diego, where she laid the foundation for a deep commitment to excellent and public service. She joined the General Accounting Division after earning her accounting degree from San Diego State University. Ms. Cachadorian joined the city of Chula Vista in 1998 as an analyst in the Finance Department, where she continued her steadfast focus on financial stewardship and held numerous leadership roles, including Finance Director, Deputy City Manager, and Assistant City Manager. In June of 2020, she made history as the first woman and first Latina to serve as Chula Vista City Manager. Yes, thank you. Her leadership and strong financial background helped lead the city through the Great Recession and was instrumental in implementing innovative strategies to mitigate the financial, economic, and community impacts to the city and residents during the COVID-19 pandemic. Throughout her tenure, Ms. Cachadorian championed strategic initiatives that enhanced city infrastructure, modernized operations, and boosted economic development, including the $1.2 billion Gaylord Pacific Resort and Convention Center financing deal, launch of city ambulance transport services, and she also launched the first phase of the university project at the new Millenia Library, and continued implementation and oversight of the Measure P and Measure A sales tax programs. The impact of her work to foster initiatives that better connect the city's diverse communities and prioritize neighborhood services, all while maintaining a fiscally responsible budget and strengthening community engagement in local government, is immeasurable. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Chair Tara Lawson-Reemer, myself, and the rest of the board members on this 30th day of September 2025 that we commend Maria Velarde Cachadorian for her outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County, and do hereby declare this day to be Maria Velarde Cachadorian Day throughout San Diego County.
Thank you so much. Yes, just a few words. Thank you, Supervisor Gary and County Board of Supervisors. This is really unexpected and greatly appreciated. I have served for almost 40 years in public service. 10 and a half of those years was with the County of San Diego and almost 28 with the city of Chula Vista. My first job right out of college was here in this building with the County of San Diego. My time with the county really does hold some of my fondest memories. I started as an entry-level accountant in the Audit and Controls Office, General Accounting Division. I still have my first paycheck right out of college. I saved it. I knew I was saving it for a reason. A whopping $547.45. I was so excited when I got that first paycheck right out of college. While with the county, I also worked with the Internal Audits Division and was able to earn my CPA license. The skills I gained while working here at the county served me well throughout my career. Coming into the building every morning, I would read the message, "The noblest motive is the public good." That's a message that was in the forefront of my decisions that I made as the city manager for the community that I served. Some of my best mentors I had in my career also worked here at the county, all of since have retired, but they have remained in my thoughts as I moved on throughout my career. I thank them for their support and guidance during those really early, impressionable years. As the city manager for the city of Chula Vista, particularly during the COVID years and the Gaylord Resort Convention Center negotiations, I worked very closely with your staff here at the county as we managed through those tough times. I have also served on the county's Treasury Oversight Committee, where I continue to contribute in a small way to county government. So, thank you for allowing me to make a few comments and for recognizing my career and accomplishments. Working in county and city government has been an honor, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve. Councilmember Fernandez is also here. I'd like to have him come up and join in the pictures, please. One of my five bosses.
So, before we begin this meeting today, I'd like to take a moment to address some House rules. Public engagement is the cornerstone of transparent and accountable government, and these Board of Supervisors meetings are one of the primary venues where all San Diegans can make their voices heard. Our county is committed to a work environment free from unlawful discrimination and harassment, including sexual, racial, religious, age, disability, or any other forms of discrimination and harassment. Under the Board's rules, speakers are not allowed to use loud threatening, shouting, impertinent slanders, profane, or abusive language to any member of the Board, staff, or the general public. Importantly, all remarks and questions must remain on topic during the duration of your speaking time and must be addressed to the Board and not to county staff. Any speaker who engages in comments that break this rule will be issued a warning. After one warning, you will be asked to leave the chamber for the rest of the meeting. Finally, speakers threatening violence will be reported to law enforcement and will be removed from the meeting immediately. This is a space for community engagement, deliberation, and progress, not for harassment, violence, and hate. So, we now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters within the Board's jurisdiction, but not an item on the meeting agenda. Let me say that again. It is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters that are within the Board's jurisdiction, but not an item on the meeting agenda, which means that if your item is on the meeting agenda and you're speaking your item is on the meeting agenda and you're speaking to it within non-agenda public communication, you are off-topic. It also means that you're speaking on an item that is not within the board's jurisdiction, you are off-topic. Under the board's rules, speakers can speak once per meeting for non-agenda public comment, either today's general legislative session or tomorrow's land use legislative session, but not both sessions. Speakers may select which session to address at your convenience. To facilitate this meeting, we will have five speakers in person and five speakers by phone to begin non-agenda public comment. The first five speakers that are in person will be randomly selected. The remainder of non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's session. Additionally, in accordance with the board rules, in order to ensure timely completion of today's agenda, for any discussion item with ten or more speakers, individuals have one minute to share your opinion. A reminder that according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English-speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the allotted time for their comments. Also a reminder that according to the board's rules of procedure, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stomp feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. Another reminder that you also must remain on topic for all of your comments during agenda items. If you disrupt the meeting, or if you are off-topic, you will be given one warning. After that warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, or you continue off-topic, you will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you. Andrew, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have fifty-two requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, thirty-six in-person and sixteen requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers, and we'll now randomly select the first five speakers in person. All the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have two minutes to address the board, and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals. Ali Vrendenberg, Tama Becker Verano, Marco Espinoza. And those three individuals will be followed by Paul Dunlap and Pamela R. If I've called your name, please come forward.
My name is Ali Vrendenberg. Chair and supervisors, my name is Ali, and I'm the founder and CEO of the Belonging Lab nonprofit. You say mental health is about prevention, but right now, most of our schools here have no full-time licensed clinicians, only counselors who cannot diagnose, treat, or intervene when a child is suicidal. That is not prevention. What you're funding, crisis stabilization units and mobile crisis teams, is crisis intervention. By the time a child ends up there, prevention has already failed. I'm asking you to fund clinicians and schools and guarantee follow-up care within days, not months, because until prevention is real, every promise you make on youth mental health is just words, and kids' lives are the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, good morning, and Marco Espinoza. My birthday is April 29th, 1994. I'm currently thirty-one years old. I am here to reiterate something I said at Chula Vista City Council that potentially, highly potentially, in the year 2032, I would like to run for President of the United States. I do not qualify in 2028 because by the inauguration day of January 2029, I will be three months and nine days short of thirty-five, so 2032. The Constitution requires three things: that you be natural-born citizen, check; that you've lived here for fourteen years, check; and that you be thirty-five and older. The youngest person to ever be elected to the presidency was JFK. He was forty-three. Youngest person to ever become president was Teddy Roosevelt. He was forty-two. He was the vice president when McKinley was assassinated. No one in American history has ever done it in their thirties. Never. I realize this.
Sir, can you please pause? I've been wanted to give you some time to to figure out the nexus between your comments and what's on the board in the board's jurisdiction, but if you could just quickly draw that nexus for us so we understand how this pertains to items within the board's jurisdiction. Thank you.
We are all electorate to that office, to the United States.
This board has no jurisdiction over the electoral rules for the under the U.S. Constitution for the United States presidency, but I could certainly ask council if that's a sufficient nexus for jurisdiction.
Chair Lawson Reamer, members of the board, the the rule for public comment, it has to be within the general jurisdiction of the board and your court or subject matter of the county. And Chair, you're correct, the board does not have the authority to set guidelines or standards for an elected official running for president.
Okay. If you have any thing that you want to raise that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board, please go ahead, but that is what these comments are limited to. Thank you.
Thank you. Other item would be, in terms of a public safety matter, and you can tell me if this is within jurisdiction, and I don't mean to say this to be alarming, but this is a wonderful device, but it also seemingly looks like a grenade. And I am concerned, I still use it, I'm not paranoid to not use it, but I am concerned that, given what I had seen during the Gaza War, that the Israelis have the potential to use this against us. That was it.
Thank you.
Good morning. Can I have everybody who's here to support Supervisor Monica Montgomery-Step stand up, please? Thank you. My name is Tama Becker Verano. I'm a community organizer for Change Begins With Me: Indivisible. I want to express my strong support for Supervisor Monica Montgomery-Step. Supervisor Montgomery-Step's leadership helps bridge communities and government. She makes space for voices that might otherwise go unheard, and in doing so, she strengthens democracy and trust in public service. Our county is better, more just, more inclusive, and more responsive because she is here. Also, as a board member for Women of Color ROAR, we are grateful for the numerous ways you show up and interact with future leaders of color, sharing your experiences, and encouraging civic engagement and public service. I ask this board to continue backing her vision, her policies, and to the community, show up, speak up, and be the strength behind her. Thank you so much.
Can I just remind everyone in the chamber, please twinkle in support. Just please do not clap. Thank you.
Free speech, a glorious right endowed to us by our Creator.
Can you please state your name?
Pam. And it is guaranteed by the Constitution and it's not granted by government. Interesting, too, that you admonish the speakers to be careful what they say, but yet, the panel, the supervisors, can accuse those in opposition of being a racist or immoral, right? Or challenge them to meet you out in the hallway? Didn't address that at all, Tara. Anyway, September 10th, board meeting.
It is unfortunately true that...
Can you hear it? Come on. Come on. Oh, come on.
It is unfortunately true that we cannot regulate free speech. It is unfortunately tr-
If a person believes free speech is only for him or herself, but not for political opponents, that person is a liberal. If the truth could not change a person's belief, that person is a fundamentalist. If a person believes that government should punish those with opposing views, that person is a tyrant. If a person believes political opponents should be punished with violence or death, that person is a terrorist.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Paul Dunlap with ForBetterBrains.org. I always appreciate the chance to speak to the Board of Supervisors. In past presentations, I've requested review of the telecare contract with Behavioral Health Services, and then also to do a review of the implementation of SB 43 throughout the county. In lieu of that, my partner and I have been doing our own investigations. So we go down to the county health, mental health hospital, monitor people as they go in, see that they're picked up on a 5150 call, and then released 24 hours later. So what we found, in lieu of the county doing a review of the SB 43 implementation, is that we see that law enforcement is doing their jobs. They're showing up, they're monitoring the situation, de-escalating. Hurt officers are also doing their job. Once they get into the healthcare system, whether it's the ERs or specifically Rosecrans, the ball is dropped repeatedly, released back onto the street. Sunday night, an interview with one of with two of the police officers, San Diego Police Department. The woman officer said to me, "What do you expect us to do? Just keep picking them up and taking them to the hospital?" I said, "Yes. This is what we need to do with SB 43. We're nine, ten months into it, and it needs to be reviewed and then monitored based off of that review." So once again, I really appreciate the time. I look forward to working further with the county in a positive manner. I think together with some of the ideas we have and the structure that's in place, we can really improve mental illness in this county and specifically get more homeless people off the street. Thank you very much for your time.
I just want to thank the speaker for speaking on an item within the board's jurisdiction, but not on the agenda today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, in accordance with the board's rules, we'll be hearing from the first five callers. The remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We will start with our first caller.
I'm getting zombie for president. Go, Marco! You got my vote. Not. And women of color? Which color? How silly and divisive.
Just again, a reminder, to speak on items within the board's jurisdiction, but not on the agenda for today, so please clarify the nexus between your comments and the board's jurisdiction, or you will forfeit your time.
You got it, Tara and Sir Reamer. And yeah, women of color? Which color? How silly and divisive this board continues to keep the people of the county. The eyes are useless when the mind is blind. We're living through an age of struggle. Surveillance, manipulation, and inversion of truth have become the norm. What once nourished humanity...
Please clarify our nexus, or your time will be forfeited. This is my last request.
Please clarify what? Are you fucking kidding me? Who the fuck do you think you are?
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Paul O'Bell, I was really looking forward to seeing and vetting a few items earlier than a week before the meeting, per Agenda Eight last meeting. Guess you didn't want to give away the plot too early, but it's never too early to begin forming an agenda. For instance, it's on consent.
Paul, your device might be muted. Paul, your device might be muted. We'll come back to that caller.
Good morning. My name is Kathleen Lippett. Thank you for letting me speak. I'd like to address the county's draft EIR for marijuana and the robust response that the county received from Fallbrook Valley and several other planning groups. Our initial concerns and ongoing concerns remain unresolved. The county's draft EIR was outdated from the beginning, and concerns have worsened because the county staff continue to ignore the vast amount of evidence, research, and problems experienced by communities that have been ignored by the county already. I would like to provide some information from the Integral Ecology Research Center, and these findings should not be ignored as well. They are very important. A particular concern is that the planning group, that water is a is a limited resource source in the unincorporated areas, and the fact that the county does not plan to put a cap on growth, the whole program should be scrapped to begin with, but nonetheless, that is, and that they are not obligated to pay for municipal water. They will simply drain the nearby wells of neighbors in that community. Ivan Mandel, who works, Medel, who works for the IERC, Integral Ecology Research Center, says water has been diverted because growers drill deeper wells, drain nearby private wells, they contaminate the water from pesticides, herbicides, and that are not monitored. And note that there's significant environmental damage documented by them on state, federal, and private lands. This process is a reactive process. The county's process is reactive. It is not proactive. Nobody is checking these grows. Nobody is controlling the pesticides, herbicides, and they're not documenting the deaths of the endemic species, of endemic native plants, the diversion of water, that the streams that are completely drained. I hope that the county will take a look at this and start listening to community planning groups who recognize these problems. These are just-
Now hear from the next caller.
Hi, my name is Wee Trans, and I am a community organizer and activist in San Diego. It really did hurt to me to hear that the public actually calling in and attacking and using language, racist language, to a black leadership woman here. I I know the country is going through a lot right now. There's a lot of divisive, a lot of different opinion, but I encourage everyone in the meeting, basically even the people on the phone, it's easier to hide on the phone when you do the thing, but please try to behave or try to engage in the process the most civil that you can. And these are the 26th century, I mean 21st century. We should not be using racist language to one another. Nobody liked that, and if you don't like that to happen to you, then don't do it to other people. It's the least that we can do. Have have respect for one another. It's basically a black leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Barbara Gordon. I am concerned as a youth advocate that nearly every week, a new intoxicated, mind-altering product emerge, often unnoticed until reports surface of people being harmed, and the physical and mental health of our youth are in jeopardy. Products like kratom and intoxicating THC hemp are dangerously addictive. Kratom comes from a tropical cree native to Southeast Asia, and the product 7OH is a potent opiate compound in- native to Southeast Asia, and the product 7OH is a potent opiate compound in kratom, becoming especially dangerous when it is extracted and concentrated in products like gummies, drinks, powders, capsules, all sold in our smoke shops, gas stations, and online. The FDA warns that 7OH is not approved, not lawful, and it's unsafe with risks that include seizures, depression, anxiety, addiction withdrawal, and overdose-like symptoms. Markets, that it is marketed as natural, these products can be just as harmful as synthetic and opiates, posing serious danger. Intoxicating hemp compact products like Delta-8 THC, THCO, THCP, and more are products that are available, again, in convenience stores, vape shops, and online without any federal oversight, and in many places without any age restriction. As a community, we need to insist that any intoxicating, mind-altering substance that are manufactured, packaging, marketed, should not be allowed to be sold in our marketplace. Public safety is the county's primary responsibility. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. We'll now return to Paul the Bold. You have 1 minute 30 seconds remaining.
Paul Abold, I was really looking forward to seeing and vetting a few items earlier than a week before the meeting, per Agenda Item 8 last meeting. Yes, you didn't want to give away the plot too early, but it's never too early to begin forming an agenda. For instance, if the items on the consent are truly routine, you should know what they are more than a week earlier. Some ideas come from things in supervisors' newsletters. They're on the agenda early. They aren't going to be half-baked, and we all want civil discourse. The best way to promote civil discourse is to be civil yourselves. People express ideas differently. Look in the mirror. I hope I can give you some ideas. Remember, it's a two-way process. Two, read the California Constitution, including the Brown Act, which is forcibly part of it, and the County Charter. Three, maybe you should take my remarks and those of others about the need for proofreading and errors in the agenda seriously, and do proofread more carefully. We all make errors, but in a legal or official document, they're a lot more serious. Four, consider deciding at the meeting if a slow talker needs more time to speak or wrap up, so please don't cut them off. Half-baked.
Thank you. Chair Lawson Reimer, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning. Again, all the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes and statements of proceedings for the general legislative, legislative session of September 9th and September 10th, 2025, and the minutes for concurrent special district meeting of the San Diego County Fire Protection District of August 26, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Sir Roger Anderson, a second by Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp. Please vote.
Chair Lawson Reimer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We now proceed with the formation of the consent agenda. This is items 1 through 12, and fire protection item 1. All items on the consent agenda are routine and will be acted upon with one motion. Individuals will be able to comment on the consent agenda after supervisors pull any items they would like for discussion. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion, or does anyone have any comments on the items on this consent agenda? Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp.
Thank you so much, Chair Lawson Reimer. I have comments for items number 1 and 7. So, for number 1, I'm proud to bring this item before the board today as part of the county's broader aging roadmap. Pursuing certified age-friendly employer designation demonstrates our commitment to creating age-friendly communities, not just through the services we provide, but also through inclusive employment practices. I want to thank our Aging and Independent Services for partnering with my office to bring this item forward and for their commitment to achieving this recognition for the county. And for item number 7, I would just ask my colleagues to continue to support the CLRB amendments on the second reading. These amendments make long-needed changes to CLRB into a more effective oversight board by expanding CLRB's authority to investigate any employee or contractor working under the direction of the sheriff or probation, including contracted healthcare providers in cases of in custody death, among other important amendments that this item does have. CLRB can be a force for positive change. With the right tools, we can ensure that the tragic and preventable deaths that we've seen in the San Diego County jail system come to an end. I want to thank the families, community members, and advocates who have been fighting for many years for the answers and solutions that we all deserve. I also want to thank our labor partners for coming to the table with solutions and an open mind. Families who have lost loved ones in the county's jail system deserve answers. The public deserves answers, and by empowering CLRB to effectively investigate these deaths, we can improve safety in our county jails and further prevent deaths. The county of San Diego is committed to accountability and putting an end to this problem that has plagued us for decades. Also, just quickly, want to thank community members who have come out. I thought about back in 2018 at the corner of Willie James Jones and Imperial, where community also came out at that time and has consistently showed support, so I just really want to thank you, Chair. With that, I will move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. And actually, let me clarify before we move on. It looks like item number 9 has actually been withdrawn by the CIO. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Ebony has confirmed. So, item 9 was withdrawn by the CIO. So, to repeat, it's the formation of the consent agenda is items 1 through 8, items 10 through 12, and then fire protection item 1. Again, items 1 through 8, items 10 through 12, and fire protection district item 1. So, thank you. We've got a second from Chair Protam Agiri. Do you have any comments or any items to pull? Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Anderson.
I don't have anything to pull, but I, I do want to thank the county staff on item number 5. This is helping fire victims in my district, and I, and I want to give a shout-out to interim Director of OES, Julie Jakey, Jakeley. She and her team did an incredible job. I also want to thank Jordan Marks in ARC, A-R-C-E-C. I'm not quite sure what that stands for, but it's very important, because they did an incredible job putting this together. And I want to thank you all for the speed in which we're moving. When people lose homes, when they go through a terrible circumstance, speed is of the essence. So, thank you for your help and support.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any items to pull, but I do have three, I'd like to comment on three of the items. So, first one is number 3. This is the update on the Tijuana River sewage issue. I want to thank Supervisor Gary for her, you know, helping and, and trying to get this issue cleared up in South County. But these are very important causes, and we have to keep in mind, in my opinion, who is ultimately responsible for this situation in the Tijuana River Valley. Mexico needs to fix their lack of and their failing sewage treatment infrastructure. And finally, to address the pollution that's impacting San Diego County. So, again, I want to thank the new federal administration, the EPA Administrator Lee Zeldin for making this a priority in Washington, DC. So, I'm happy to support this item number 3. However, item 4, I'm going to be registering a no vote on 4. This is accepting the Prebys Foundation funding for the immigrant legal defense program. I do not support this program. I do not think this is the county's role or a priority for San Diego County taxpayers. I voted to include minors in this program, and frankly, would rather see all the money going to only legal defense for minors, if that's the case. But, and then we would have plenty of existing funding. But I don't agree that our budget should include paying for illegal immigrant, legal defense funding. Item 7, also want to register a no vote on this one, for this is the CLRB ordinance. Appreciate all the CLRB board is doing, but I'm very concerned that expanding the CLRB mission will lead, lead us to be unable to find contractors who are willing to provide healthcare in our, in our jails. And nobody's perfect on this. We don't want to have any deaths, but the members of CLRB are not medical professionals and do not have the expertise necessary, I think, to review the decisions of medical professionals. Therefore, for that reason, I'm not going to be supporting item 7. So, that's, so Andrew, that's item 4 and 7. I'll be registering a no vote on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. No items to pull. And I just want to take a moment to thank the Prebys Foundation for your partnership and for the philanthropic community support in coming together to defend due process and make sure that justice is, is served in our community and that we are always prioritizing fairness in our judicial system. So, thank you to the Prebys Foundation for that. With that, we now turn to public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 31 requests to speak on items on the consent agenda, 18 in person, and 13 requesting to speak by phone. As a reminder, item 9 has been withdrawn. Any individuals that requested to speak on items on the consent agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have 2 minutes to address the board, and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. Also, when speaking, please identify which item or items on the consent agenda you are speaking about. I will be calling you in groups of 3, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the first 3 individuals. Pamela, Maureen Glazer, and Daniela Mejia. If I've called your name, please come forward.
And just a reminder to reiterate what the clerk said. Please identify which item on the consent agenda you're speaking to and ensure that your comments are directly relevant to that item. Again, in the agenda packet, it's items 1 through 8, and items 10 through 12 are fire protection item 1. Thank you.
You may begin your comments.
Good morning, Chair Lawson Reimer, Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp, and supervisors. I am Maureen Glazer. I am Director of Transportation Operations at Jewish Family Service, and I oversee the county-funded no-cost transportation program for older adults. I'm speaking on Agenda Item 2, sorry. Thank you for your ongoing commitment to healthy aging and to Aging and Independent Services for your partnership and for highlighting the program in the 2024-2025 Aging Roadmap Annual Report. Since the report goes through the end of the last fiscal year, I'd like to share updated information about our impact. Since the program launched, the program has provided older adults across every district with almost 69,000 rides, traveling over 316,000 miles throughout the county. These rides mean access to critical needs and meaningful connections. 31% of the rides are medical appointments, 34% are for shopping for daily necessities, and 26% are to senior centers, adult day programs, social, personal, and religious activities that all help reduce social isolation. Importantly, 95% of the riders report they can complete routine and social activities independently. Because of this program, nearly 600 older adults have used these rides to maintain their health, independence, and well-being. Funding for this program ends in just 6 months. Without this funding, we will have to stop offering this impactful transportation service. My hope, and the hope of the older adults that we serve, is that we can continue this lifeline. Thank you for recognizing transportation as a cornerstone of healthy aging and for your continued leadership in building an age-friendly San Diego County.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Daniela Mejia. I'm speaking on item 3 concerning the Tijuana River Valley. I work for the Resource Conservation District, and I am a garden member of the Tijuana River Valley Community Garden, which has been there for 23 years, established in 2002. It is a gem of the community, and it's a hidden gem of the community. Many people don't know of it. When you enter the Tijuana River Valley, it feels like you have left the city. It is often a place where people go so that they can be relieved of the demands of life. And as you all know, it has impacted the air and the soil and the water, and thank you for all your efforts to bring it to light. I, I appreciate that. We want a solution. And an unintended consequence of trying to find a solution has been that the organization, the RCD, that has been wanting, that has been managing this place for 23 years, doesn't want to manage it anymore. They'd like to terminate their lease with the County of San Diego. That means that they have to ask everybody to leave. That's gardeners that have been there for 2 decades, that have made a life there, that are there for therapy, veterans that are there for therapy for their PTSD, kids that are learning where their food comes from. And the RCD, letting go of this land means that all these people have to leave, and they are pissed, but they also want a solution. They want help. They want a plan. They, I, I just, we ask that you help and communicate with us. Please communicate with us. Meet with them. Meet with them so that there could be a plan. This land will turn into a dump. The invasive species will take over. We manage this land ourselves. The, the management, it needs management, it needs a plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to invite 3 additional speakers. Paloma Serna, Ashley Turman, and allegedly Audra. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Hi, Pam. Number 1, I'm a senior, but no. This appears very much like discrimination. You can't ask their age, their color, their religion, their sexual behavior, et cetera, when you're interviewing an applicant. What is this about? Are you adding an S to DEI? Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Seniors? This is absurd. Hire based on skill, character, and integrity. I don't care, as a resident in the county, how old somebody is or what they look like. I want them to be able to do the job for which I'm paying them through my tax dollars. Number 2 is kind of a good idea. There's a lot of nice things being done for seniors, but seniors, beware. Don't just think everything this government is giving to you is actually free. Number 4, I'm kind of torn about this, the Conrad Prebys Foundation donation for the Illegal Immigrant Rights Illegal Defense Program. I would be in agreement with the $500,000 being donated if we remove $500,000 from that fund and put it back in our general fund.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Paloma Serna, the mother of Elisa Serna, and I'm speaking on item 7. I'm the mother of Elisa Serna who died in Los Colinas on November 11, 2019, after being denied medical care. I'm with Saving Lives in Custody California North County Equity and Justice Coalition. Since then, I have stood at this podium again and again, and I will keep hearing the same word, well, excuse me, the same words. We can't look at contracted medical side. That comment has protected vendors, not people. Item 7 ends that excuse. It says oversight doesn't stop at the contract. It reaches the doctors, nurses, and companies whose decision decides whether a human being lives or dies. It makes death investigation the first priority, even when someone's death is stamped "natural." It stops the clock that buries cases. It demands cooperate, uh, co, uh, excuse me, cooperating and records and not stall tactics. This year, people are still dying in our jails. I carry their names with me. Brandon Yates, Saxon Rodriguez, Kevin Mills, Matthew Settles, Omar Moreno-Aurora, and my Elisa. So, be clear and be brave. Vote yes on item 7. Adopt it as written. Fully fund it and enforce it. Order immediate agreements with the sheriff, with Kelly Martinez, probation, and every medical vendor for rapid access to medical records, and firm subpoena timelines with consequences for delays. Don't pass oversight on paper and starve it in practice. Give CLRB the authority, access, and resources to reach the truth. Do this for families who are waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Just apologies. I see most folks are snapping or twinkling, but just a reminder, no clapping in the chamber. If you do, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. It's disruptive of our proceedings, and I do appreciate the positive energy you're giving to our speakers, but no clapping. Just be silent support. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Ashley Turman, and I am here in, for section 7. I'm the oldest daughter of Lyndegale Bagby, who tragically passed away while in custody at Los Colinas Detention Facility on June 13 of this year. It is now... It has now been nearly four months, and my family and I are still without answers about the circumstances of her death. Despite placing multiple calls to the watch commander, we have never received a call or any meaningful information. I was not notified of my mother's death until approximately seven and a half hours after they stated she was found unresponsive. When I asked about identification of the body, I was told it was unnecessary due to the location of her passing. When the time came for the viewing, my mother's condition suggested to me that she had been deceased for far longer than what we were told. She appeared severely bloated, and it seemed the embalming process had not been effective. She had a 75-pound weight gain in a five-and-a-half-month period. This raised serious concerns about the accuracy of the timeline and the care that she received in her final hours. I am not here only in support of my mother, but also to advocate for change. Policies and procedures within the San Diego County jails and among the medical contractors who serve them must be improved so that preventable deaths are truly prevented and incarcerated individuals are treated with dignity and humanity. In her recent interview, Sheriff Kelly Martinez compared to the state of our jails, compared the state of our jails to the homelessness we see in our streets, but incarceration does not strip a person of their value, of or of their humanity. Even if individuals are experiencing homelessness, addiction, or other challenges, their lives matter. My mother's life mattered. The lives of every person in custody matter. I respectfully ask you to recognize this urgent need for accountability, transparency, and reform so that no other family has endured what mine and others have suffered. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'll invite three additional speakers. Ilka Weston, Diana Sanchez, and Mark. If I've called your name, please come forward.
And to have no fellowship with the unfruitful works of darkness, but rather reprove them, that's Ephesians 5:11. Just wanted you to know that. And free speech, Charlie Kirk was killed for that. Anywho, so number one, and number two.
Please state your name for the record.
My person uses the name Audra. So, you guys, when you're dealing with old people, it's rather frightening when I see how you deal with children, like the people you gave an award to, which was very terrifying. So, it's another, you know, demographic to basically exploit, and when you have 1.1 million 50 and older, you don't even have enough people to help them with ride shares or anything like that. So, it'll be interesting to see you exploit more, because what happens is in probate court, people take their homes and put these people, you know, in a nursing home to just kind of go and waste away until they die. It's very sad. And until we're, with number three, until we're ready to deal with Mexico, it's like, you guys care more about commerce, so you're willing to sell the people out for commerce instead of saying, "We're not going to do any commerce with Mexico until this stops," but, you know, proves that you guys don't care about the people. And anything that you're doing with this illegal immigrant defense fund, even with the children, it's like those children go back into the system, they go back into foster care that she is ahead of. Uh-oh, Joel, can I have my time back since he's interrupting it? That's rude. That's rude, because anybody else, you would be telling them to stop that. So, it's like rules for thee, but not for me. It's really disturbing. And the face that you're giving me, Monica, when you were the one that told me to be careful, it's really disturbing, because you can tell people that and laugh about it, but if anybody else said that to you...
Can you please pause the speaker's time? Audra, you were doing amazing.
Yes, I know.
You did a great job on items one, three, and four, so let's continue speaking to items on the consent agenda. That, those comments were not relevant to items on consent agenda, so this is your first warning on that matter. Thank you.
Right. Okay, well, let's talk about CLERB for my 10 seconds. Until the AG is selecting people to keep these law enforcement accountable, it's not going to make a difference what they do.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I support service dogs, just know that. My life is saved five years ago. One, it's really nice to be here, and it's nice to see the room packed. There are a lot of issues on here, and I'll go ahead and start...
Can you please state your name?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. My name is Ilka Weston. I am the co-founder with Youssef Miller of Transparency and Accountability Against Probation to Protect Youth and Adults. No other group is out there, but we care. One thing I want to bring up, obviously, is item number one. I'm in support of that. Thank you very much, Monica, for bringing that up. I want to point out that we have the amazing Mother Harmon here, who is ready to stay till the end of the day to make her open comment. I think we should allow her to do her open comment a little earlier. In addition, I wanted to show that support. I find it very important that we add into it disabled people, because people hear the word disabled and they misjudge. Obviously, I support Paloma Aguirre, County Board Supervisor. Paloma Aguirre is going to take me a minute. Thank you for your focus on the Tijuana River. This has been a crisis since 1976. No more waiting. And the other thing that I find very, very important is Agenda Number Seven. Right now, we have people with mental health problems as well as addiction problems in jail. Mental health, addiction, disease does not belong in jail, and I support giving CLERB more power, but what I'd really love to see is take that $500 million that Joel Anderson awarded to Kelly Martinez and build a mental health hospital run by Scripps and Sharp. And if I could talk to their boards and get a yes, why can't you? Mostly you. There are a lot of other issues I would like to bring up, but thank you for...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark, so on one and two, you neglected to mention inflation, and what you're doing is a Band-Aid on a giant gaping wound. In fact, it's more like chopping someone in half, and they're bleeding to death in seconds, and you're giving them the Band-Aid. So, people need to see these YouTube videos on inflation. This compares...
Can you please pause the speaker's time?
Oh, please, yes.
Please clarify how your item, your comments are relevant.
Yes, I have the right under 954, 54954.3C to critique your omissions, and you've completely omitted in your solution of the problem, this, which I just, and I'm stating...
Which item are you speaking to, sir?
What?
Which item?
To one and two, especially two, because you're trying to help seniors with your programs. So, it's directly applicable? Now, may I continue?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, people need to see this. I don't have much time. In 1955, the average American, the average American could buy a house with three years' pay. You could do that now if you make, oh, about $300,000 a year, okay? So, you think we might be worse off? These are titles. People need to see this from 6 minutes 40 seconds to 24 minutes. That'll tell you how completely corrupt the monetary system is with the Federal Reserve causing inflation that's making it impossible for you guys to do any kind of program that could seriously help the seniors. They already earned their retirement, and their inflation is making it impossible.
Can we pause this time again? I just want to be clear. We're talking about the update on the aging roadmap?
Yeah, your programs to help the seniors.
And, sir, we have no jurisdiction over the Federal Reserve or inflation, so, but I would actually like to counsel to weigh in.
No, I'll admit that you don't.
Sir, please, please...
I admit that you don't.
Please do not interrupt me. I want to find out whether your comments are relevant to the agenda item when they're concerning the Federal Reserve.
Chair Lawson Raymer, members of the board, the county doesn't have any say over the Federal Reserve, so unless the speaker is able to tie that activity to the county board's jurisdiction, then this would be outside of the subject matter of the board.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You're welcome to continue speaking on the policy recommendations or lack thereof in item number two, so long as it's within the board's jurisdiction. Appointments to the Federal Reserve, including matters concerning monetary policy, are not within the board's jurisdiction. You can go ahead.
I understand that. I do want to state that it is within your jurisdiction to say when something's completely unconstitutional and completely wrong with the state government or the federal government and to refuse to go along with it. That is within your jurisdiction, and there are regions that have, and do. So, also about the sewage crisis, you've done nothing. The update's ridiculous. It's not solved yet. It should have been philanthropic funding. They shouldn't fund illegal aliens, and everyone needs to see this video, which says how, what a disaster it is.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Leila Aziz, Darwin Fishman, Reginald Washington. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Diana Sanchez, and I'll be speaking on item number seven. Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. I am here as a mother whose daughter, Diana Graneo, died in custody. Diana would have been 29 October 26. No parent should ever have to stand here begging for accountability and for the loss of their child. I know Sheriff Martinez may oppose expanding CLERB's jurisdiction over healthcare providers, but with all due respect, healthcare in our jails is not separate from custody. It is part of custody. When someone is incarcerated, their life is in the hands of the sheriff's department, its employees, and its contractors. Its medical decisions or neglect contribute to a death that must be subject to independent review. And I want to be clear, not everyone in custody is an addict. Many struggle with mental illness and some with both. I am a recovering addict who has almost three years. Yet, far too often, deputies and its healthcare providers stereotype judge and hide behind the badge instead of treating people as human beings. The lack of compassion has deadly consequences. Board of Supervisors, you know that CLERB will be hiring trained professionals to oversee doctors, because it would be ludicrous to send a farmer into surgery, right? We need experts reviewing experts, and we need accountability. Board of Supervisors, you cannot bring my daughter back, but you can bring reform and you can give me peace of mind that no mother or family suffers the way my daughter did. So, you guys will be hiring, they will be hiring experts to do the job of the professionals, and you guys know this. CLERB will be doing that. So, vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
That's rough. You want my name? Leila Aziz. I'm going to speak on CLERB and some of the issues that are going on in the jail. It is heartbreaking to see these families here begging for some kind of system that will look at what we all should think is normal. When we have people, and we put in complaints to CLERB, and they just automatically wave them away, saying they had no jurisdiction because they are not part of CLERB, and that's health, that's food, when they served black waffles with big eyes and big lips for Chicken and Waffle Day, when James Pittman was put in, a memo was put in to keep him from the top bunk, and he was put in the cell with another disabled person, so neither could be on the top bunk. Now, James Pittman is dead. When this young man was raped repeatedly as he banged on the cell door and then murdered in our jails. This is why they're so upset. I also want us to look at our aging population and San Diego as a county uplifting some of the people that have helped us so much. We have people that don't understand history, don't care about history, and YouTube is their peer-reviewed scholarly resource. But we need to look at in 1963 Green, that black pilot who had to sue this government in order to fly, not because he wasn't qualified, because when you see a black pilot, he's not qualified, but because Continental said no one wanted to see a black pilot fly, and it made them scared. It's in the Supreme Court. He was overqualified. So, let's stop playing games. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Supervisors. Reginald Washington, Project Aware, want to speak about CLERB. I've been here before. I want to continue to say this. You have individuals like myself. I was a former lifer. I spent a third of my life in prison. Today, I own a building. Today, I sit in front of you guys as a lived, experienced expert that works at SDSU as a professor. Today, I ask you guys, bring on all help. If CLERB wants to bring in community, bring them on. If you want us inside doing the work, we're here and available. That's all we ask for. We're not sitting here trying to fight and talk about what has already been done, because that's a done deal. What we have to do now is find out, make sure no one else dies. As the individual who's putting in the work tirelessly, passing out Narcan, giving people awareness about fitness, what are you guys going to do to help us? Don't use us as an excuse why you can't. And Monica, I just want to give you my love, my respect, because you're out there with us. To show the picture of you holding Narcan, saying that it's helpful, that's what brings us to life, that we can do this. It's empowering when you do the work, not just on the seat, but out there on the ground. That means a lot, and for you to have racist comments brought to you, that's why we're here, that you're not alone in this. You're not alone in this, and as county supervisors, we ask that you guys continue to support her, which you guys continue to do, but we need to continue, because it's a tireless fight, ask this from any black man. It's not going to stop. It didn't stop with my grandfather, it didn't stop with my great-great-grandfather, it didn't stop when they took us all the way from Africa to here. So, we know about the work. We just ask that we be a part of it. Don't shun those who've made mistakes in the past, because that's the last thing that you need to do. Instead, empower us. Have us come inside and be part of the solution. That's all I ask.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Youssef Miller, Jacqueline Clark, and Kathleen Harmon.
Good afternoon. Darwin Fishman, he am his, with Racial Justice Coalition of San Diego, and I want to just first thank Supervisor Tara Lawson Raymer. It's very difficult work that you're doing. We very much appreciate it, and given the type of language that's been used in the racist attacks, especially on Supervisor Monica Montgomery Step, we really appreciate it. And we, I think it's also really important, following what was just said, that in making history for Supervisor Monica Montgomery Step in 150 years, we don't want to have to wait another 150 years for that, and so I appreciate what you've done, Monica, in sticking with this and knowing that this is not what you signed up for, but that it's really about the agenda and supporting the community, not having to receive racist attacks. And with that, I wanted to speak to item seven, because this is part of uplifting a people's agenda. The reason why you're doing the work is because it's been neglected. CLERB has been clamoring for this for a long time. If the police keep blaming the drug overdoses on the medical staff, it's just common sense that CLERB should take oversight of that so they can get out, stop getting out of that and just saying it's their fault. And I do think that Supervisor Jim Desmond, your comments should be taken seriously and responded to. Let me share this with you. I used to serve on the old CRB, now CPP. Let me tell you that for professionals, you keep saying that CLERB is not professional medical staff. Well, let me let you in on a secret. CLERB is also not professional law enforcement staff either, but they don't have any problem making judgments about law enforcement. The truth is, is if you have in custody deaths and there's a dispute between law enforcement and medical staff, CLERB has already said they'll bring in extra specialists. The point is, you don't want one blaming the other, and then you don't have oversight of the other part, and then what? Nothing happens. That's the reason why we have the problems with in custody deaths. Monica's proposal gives us a way to finally get out of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Jacqueline Clark, and I'm 61 years old, and I'm a retired county employee from HSSA, Public Health, Maternal Child and Family Health Services. Shout out to all of them. My comments are related to item one. I agree and support pursuing an age-friendly employer designation, and I support Monica Montgomery Step. The county states that pursuing age-friendly employer designation represents a natural next step in further advancing the county's commitment to equity, inclusion, and a workforce that reflects San Diego County residents. A workforce that reflects diversity of San Diego County residents undoubtedly includes race. And just as equity and inclusion are priorities relating to age, so should respect across lines of race, culture, and identity. The county and we as a community should ensure that equity is not only a policy, but a real, tangible practice in how we treat each other and how we speak about others who don't look like us, are not the same age as us, or who don't hold the same beliefs as we might have. Being respectful has to be tied into this, because can we really... Being respectful has to be tied into this because can we really have equity without respect? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Youssef Miller. I'm with the North County Equity and Justice Coalition, Saving Lives in Custody, California. And I'm speaking on item seven, in support of item seven. We have nurses and we have medical staff who have caused the loss of loved ones here in San Diego County. And before this particular nurse was responsible for causing the life, the loss of life for Elisa Serna, she was responsible for chipping the tooth of another woman. And before that, she was responsible for beating another woman up and there was no oversight for law, for medical in the jails. No oversight. So this continued to go on, not only with this nurse, but how many other nurses, how many other doctors. We see medical neglect often over and over and over again with our loved ones not receiving heart medication, died, not receiving insulin, died, not receiving Dilantin for seizures and cracked their head on the pavement. These are things that are happening that are preventable. And when we decided, and we've been asking for this since 2020, we've been working on this with the impacted families, we have nearly two dozen families that, most of them couldn't be here today, you've heard from a few of them earlier today, that have been asking for since 2020 to have the CLRB oversee the medical for years. And I thank Monica Montgomery-Steph for paying attention to that the whole way through and bringing initiative forward to actuate that, that process. When that was pulled together, in the initial phase, it said that medical experts will be hired to look into in custody deaths for the medical part, nurses and doctors. When it was submitted to each one of the board members, it had that in there. When it came on the first read, again, it had that in there. And today, we have that in there. So to say that there's, the medical professionals are not there, they've always been in the ordinance.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in person. John Brady, Julie Porter, and Rachel Hayes. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I'm here in support of my county supervisor. Last time I was here, I wasn't able to stand and talk because I was so emotional about how she was attacked. And I thank you, Tara, for taking away what I really wanted to say and ask you to do, look like you've done it. I just pray that you support it, make sure that she is not attacked personally. Surely we have freedom of speech, but many have come up here and attacked at her and not, you know, shared what they wanted to say. And I stand to say that we're here today and we are not going to tolerate no one to stand up and mistreat our supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, or good morning, rather. Thank you. John Brady, Lived Experience Advisors, here to talk about one and two, as well as the Tijuana River bed and I can't, there's another item that I was going to speak on. But thank you for your time. I wanted to talk about seniors and how we're handling seniors and system-wide, some of the issues that we see. I'm really grateful to see that we're implementing a disability accommodation process, starting with some of the primary groups or programs within the county that serve our seniors. But we continue to see issues with people that need disability accommodation. If you call the telephone number right now of almost any department in the county and ask for a disability accommodation, they look at you like you don't, they don't even have any clue. And sometimes it can take upwards of 30 minutes to find somebody in that department that knows what that is. Providing reasonable accommodation is critical, especially as people age and begin to develop more disabilities as a result. We hear continuously about issues where people can't get accommodation or a service provider that has a contract with specific services that are supposed to be provided, they're not even aware of the fact that those services, their frontline doesn't even know that those services are supposed to be provided. This is why we've been recommending, and you'll get a proposal from us this afternoon, to implement a client satisfaction measurement tool, a tool just to gather what people's experiences are so that we can provide that data directly to you and allow you to analyze what's going on with contract providers and all of the services that you're offering to people who are seniors with disabilities. We see this consistently as an issue and we think if you really want to identify where and how to improve the system and where to build more money into contracts, where to take money away, this is an excellent way to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Rachel Hayes with Lived Experience Advisors. No one should disrespect anybody up there, period. No one should disrespect anyone, period, anywhere. Respect is given, not earned, period. Okay? So I'm here to talk about one, two, three, and seven in two minutes. Reasonable accommodations. Everybody is different. They do not fit in one box. So everybody needs to be accommodated for whatever they need medically, whatever, whatever their affliction is, whatever it is, accommodate them. Number two, I've been doing these incredible surveys with, from homeless to housing and I have learned so much. People just want someone to listen to them, to listen to them and hear them and not judge them for their afflictions or they don't have any, or their mental abilities. And we all know I'm dual diagnosed, okay? And also, I want to talk about, thank you for the Tijuana River. I live in San Ysidro, okay? My health has gone down since I have lived there for just over two years. I am the fourth person and there'll be a fifth person having emergency surgery to get their gallbladder removed since living there. I was healthier on the streets, okay? Thank you. And number seven, the man, the love of my life that I was on the streets with, I met June 9th, 2012. Dominique McCoy was murdered in county jail and it was completely unavoidable. The clerk did not get rid of a warrant that was on there and they did not put in...
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up.
I know. Sorry. Thank you. I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the final speaker in person, Areli Perez.
Hello, I'm Julie Porter, Lived Experience Advisors. Thank you for hearing me today. Yes, you all deserve respect. We, we all do and we need to speak with kindness and understanding. We may not see eye to eye, but that's okay. That's what makes us so great. We can all do it together. I'm here to speak on mostly number two. As being a senior, I recently, this is my lived experience recently, I had a complete hip replacement, my right hip. It's doing great, thank you. However, I have gone through this by myself. I was supposed to have somebody with me for the first 24 hours post-surgery. I couldn't find anybody. Yes, I've been approved for IHSS. Finding somebody is a different story. I'm going to have to put something out on Facebook and vet people that are IHSS workers. I, I need help and there are thousands of people just like me that need and we deserve the help that, that we need. Don't forget us. I have a lot to give still and I want to give it. Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Areli Perez. I'm speaking on item number three. Last week, gardeners and farmers of the Tijuana River Valley Community Garden were notified by the Resource Conservation District of Greater San Diego, who operates that site, that it will not be renewing its lease with the county of San Diego. This decision has been made in response to the ongoing media coverage and more awareness about the Tijuana River Valley health crisis. And it was explained to us as staff of the RCD and as community members of the Tijuana River Valley that this was to protect staff and community members. We acknowledge these concerns, but must stress that the Tijuana River Valley is an irreplaceable space for our community. In South San Diego, where green spaces are scarce and health disparities are severe, this garden provides food, health, and community connection. Its loss would be devastating. Gardeners and farmers recognize the potential health concerns in the valley, yet they firmly believe that the benefits of this space far outweigh the risk. To date, there is no definitive evidence indicating that the remaining in that particular part of the river valley poses a health risk. For these reasons, they are choosing to remain cultivating on that land. Today, we are calling on the county of San Diego to step in and ensure the garden's future. If the RCD cannot continue its management, the county should help secure a new steward, whether another organization or the county itself. Until new management is established, gardeners and farmers are requesting permission to remain on site. Immediate displacement would be unacceptable and would cause irreparable harm. We are also requesting more education and a meeting with the gardeners and farmers of the Tijuana River Valley. This matter is a matter of health, equity, and community resilience. We urge the county to act now to protect and preserve the Tijuana River Valley Community Garden. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. When it is their turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'll remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We'll start with their first caller.
Onswello here. Okay. So first off, I hope you're okay Tara. Did you get some water? I hope you're doing okay. Okay? I'm going to be on topic, like many others weren't, but you'll probably try to call
Onconsuela, your device might be muted. We'll come back to that caller.
Age-friendly discrimination. Don't know why you need a special schedule. Why don't you just print something about encouraging older workers on job flyers and announcements? Local, TJ River sewage. Local institutions like UCSD are doing a lot of studies to identify civic pollutants and problem areas, but, and so we should rely on local efforts, not the state with its financial problems or feds with their huge deficits. And I hope the feds don't start clawing the money for TJ fix or we might actually have to rely on our own resources, whether dialing for dollars and feeding the sewage cleanup overhead spending scam each time something happens. And what have we got for money? Feeding local? Local terror inflation? Bad idea for San Diego contributing toll revenue since that would end up reducing Woodward's Crumbs to Esti County regions, which now badly need transit improvements funded by those tolls. While there are a few improvements on Fed front like the IBWC sewage treatment plant finally being repaired, there are local efforts that are also having effect and needs probably would be quicker. Way of real stake in the matter. I'm glad somebody finally recognizes that stuff should be put behind barriers like in the old days. Now, if we only had handheld or automobile attached pollution monitors to zero in on the pollution, as I suggested, it would be greatly reduced by now. Accurate data monitoring.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Madison. I'm going to speak on item one. As you consider pursuing the Certified Age Friendly Employer Designation, I want to highlight the tremendous value older adults bring to our county workforce, especially when it comes to public health and public safety roles. Adults over 50 carry long-term wisdom shaped by decades of experience and many have lived through the consequences of past public health decisions. They remember the aggressive marketing of tobacco to young people and they witnessed firsthand the toll these policies took on communities. Today, we face a new public health challenge with marijuana being marketed and normalized for use. Older adults in public health offer essential perspectives, helping us avoid repeating mistakes of the past. Their lived experience strengthens our decision-making, ensuring we prioritize prevention, health, and safety over industry influence. By valuing and retaining older workers, we not only honor their contributions, but also secure a workforce that is steady, informed, and deeply connected to the lessons of history. That wisdom will help guide San Diego toward a healthier and safer policies for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Becky Raff and I'd like to speak to item SP 0168. October 5th through 11th is Fire Prevention Week and it's a reminder that fire safety must remain a top priority in every part of our community. The National Fire Protection Association, or NFPA, has raised important concerns about marijuana facilities. They state that whether growing, manufacturing, or selling products, each type of operation brings unique fire hazards. The NFPA breaks down these hazards, stating that grow sites rely on high-intensity lighting and overloaded electrical systems. Processing facilities often use hazardous extraction methods involving gases like butane and carbon dioxide, which can leak, ignite, or explode. Even retail spaces pose risks with occupant loads, egress pathways, and combustible finishes. The NFPA states that these are real threats to workers, first responders, and nearby residents. This is deeply concerning because when we reviewed the draft environmental impact report for marijuana facilities, it did not include a detailed analysis of fire risks. That omission is significant, especially since most of our unincorporated communities are in rural, high-fire severity zones. Ignoring the potential for increased fire hazards in these areas places residents at greater risk. During Fire Prevention Week, I urge the county to strengthen oversight, ensure fire risk analysis is fully incorporated into the draft environmental impact report, and enforce fire code compliance for every aspect of the marijuana industry. Fire prevention is not just about protecting buildings, but it's about protecting lives. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next speaker.
Item three, no economic study on Mexico sewage is required because one was already done by the county and the San Diego Chamber of Commerce last year. I'll read it during item 17. Sewage queen, Posa Paloma, even admitted.
With different academic institutions that have been taking plenty and thorough samples of soil, air, and water, empirical evidence is there. We know what needs to be done.
Item four, no to the county's lawyers for illegals program. The Prebus Foundation needs to be investigated by the federal government for contributing $500,000 to this unconstitutional program. Item five, yes to waiting fees for those who lost their homes or suffered property damage from the fires in Lakeside. Is there a way to make this an automatic policy? Item seven, no to over $417,000 for CLRB politicos to investigate deaths they are unqualified to investigate, especially Nadia Keen-Ayub, who would benefit from the county's mental health services. Item 11, a note to Renita Gutierrez to the Commission on Women and Girls. She's racist Planned Parenthood propaganda affairs director. Tara voting to approve Renita after she gave her a political proclamation is a conflict of interest. Planned Parenthood also funded Tara, Monica, and Paloma's campaigns, so it's another conflict of interest for all three of them to vote on this. No to Myra Alvarez to the First Five Commission. No to Myra Alvarez to the First Five Commission. She's a handpicked minion of Obama, Biden, Bonta, and Newscom. Her children's partnerships have crazy stuff on their website, such as, quote, "No matter who holds the power, white supremacy ideology holds the power," end quote. No to Rafael Perez to the Regional Airport Authority. He's the SDIM secretary, his wife Serena is conflict of interest, Planned Parenthood's director, and he's allies with corrupt Lorena Gonzalez. No to Kevin Sevico to the Planning Commission. He's a political campaign consultant, was accused of using a misleading job title on his ballot, just like Tara. He worked for corrupt Catherine Blakeshire and abandoned his post as a curlsbat planning commissioner to join a county board. He's not qualified to be on a school board or a planning commission, and he doesn't even live in D1 for Paloma to pick him. Tara obviously picked this leftover Nathan Lorena garbage. Respect is earned when county corruption ends, and wire Monica's minions all off-topic. Figure that one out.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Hello, my name is Annalise Dubois, and I'm here to address item 3. I'm extremely concerned that while we continue to face the ongoing sewage crisis in the Tijuana River, the RCD has also decided not to renew the lease for the Tijuana River Valley Community Garden. This garden has been a lifeline for over 200 gardeners and small farm businesses, offering food, flowers, community for years. To lose this space in the middle of a public health and environmental crisis is devastating for San Diego as a whole. Closing the garden without a transition plan ignores years of investment, care, connection that families, farmers, and neighbors have put into this land. Access to safe, affordable growing space is already one of the biggest challenges for small growers in our county, and removing this site only worsens the burden at a time when we should be expanding, not reducing resilient green spaces. I strongly urge the county to address the sewage contamination with transparency and urgency while also working with the RCD, county parks, and community members to protect and preserve the garden. Both issues are directly connected to public health, food, security, and community well-being, and they must be treated as urgent priorities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Anne Riddle here. I came today to speak to consent item 4, the acceptance of $500,000 donation from the Conrad Previs Foundation. I appreciated Supervisor Desmond's comments because I too am concerned. Given us the travel as you move from country to country, you can't really enter a country without all the appropriate passports and documents, and they certainly don't provide you financial assistance if you're there without the appropriate document. I'm sort of concerned about our use of county money at this particular time in that situation. And I understand his particular attention to the unaccompanied immigrant children. When this item was on the agenda, I think it was item 16, in early September, there were several questions asked about these unaccompanied immigrant children that are still part of now this agenda item, consent, agenda item, that haven't been answered. Who are these children? Does the county know who they are? Does the county have the capacity to care about children? As we're left questioning some of the things that we hear about Polanski, does the county have the capacity to care about people who are imprisoned? And now it seems like the county took years to intercede on behalf of animals who were being damaged there in the North County area. So we question, is the county prepared to handle the damage that they can cause by not investigating further items like consent to item 4? And let's find out who these unaccompanied immigrant children are. We need to be able to tell our people here in the unincorporated part of the county that this county has the resources and will use them to protect children, and this particular item.
We'll hear from the next caller.
Respect. That's all I asked for, for what, seven years since basically 2017? I asked for you guys to do an investigation, but I don't get any respect at all. Matter of fact, you pretend that I don't exist.
Please pause the speaker's time.
Much like you don't, you pretend that...
Please pause the time. Just a reminder that we are currently on the consent agenda still. So that is items 1 through 9, sorry, excuse me, items 1 through 8 and 10 through 12 are Fire Protection District 1. So please clarify which item you're speaking to and ensure your comments stay relevant to the specific item. Thank you.
And I'll ask you to please state your name for the audio record. I'll unmute you now, and you have 1 minute 47, 46 seconds.
I'm talking about the same thing that the other commenters were talking about, you know, racist comments, right? I mean, apparently that was on there. You didn't stop any of them. So let's go ahead and talk about...
That is not an agenda item on the consent agenda. So you can look at your agenda if you need to, but please keep your remarks relevant to the items on the consent agenda. I will give you one more opportunity, and if you are not able to stay pertinent, you will forfeit your time.
Absolutely. We, let's go ahead and talk about why you guys are here. You are here through an election process, and that is why you're able to make these choices. You have not done an investigation on the registration cards that came in through lobbyist groups that I've asked you to do right before you gave me that ref...
Counsel, is anything he said at all relevant to any item on the consent agenda?
Chair Lawson Reimer, members of the board, the discussion, as I heard it, was not on any specific agenda item. He didn't identify any agenda items that he was discussing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Your time is forfeited. Next speaker.
Thank you. We'll hear from the final caller.
Hi, my name is Ariane Deladea. I'm commenting on item number 2. As a IHSS caregiver, I can attest to that a lot of people who need, especially the 60, I'm over 60, by the way, the relevance of my speaking in 4, item number 2. I am over 60, and I am an IHSS caregiver. And I can tell you that many people who call caregivers that they don't get a response. I usually respond to the calls, and I tell them if I qualify, if I not, if I can't help them or not. And there are a lot of people out there in need of care, and that would be something that people over 60 can do, you know, on the lighter side. The problem is that a lot of the services include a lot of help, the physical help, and for us, over 60, that would be a little much. I truly, please, take that into consideration when you do the roadmap. We do the roadmap. And also, item number 1, yes, we need more jobs, and caregiving is one of them. Just pay a little more because that very low pay, close to minimum wage, is just not enough. And I thank you, Supervisors, for the time. Thank you, and you have a great day.
Thank you. We'll return to the first caller, Consuelo. You have 1 minute 36 seconds remaining.
Okay, Consuelo here. And my device was not muted, but for some reason, it just continues to happen to people like myself, with you guys. Anyways, for decades, the TJ River Sewage Crisis has been allowed to go on purposely. Sewage flows hard into the ocean even when there's no rain, and the people of IB and all of South County continue to pay the price. Supervisors like Tara and Paloma, the selected one, as though, they act as if they're doing things about this, and it's plain to see who they don't want to inconvenience, and that is Mexico, the polluters. They don't care about the taxpayers, the families, the residents, whose health, property values, and peace of mind have been sacrificed. This issue keeps people sick, anxious, desperate, and it's allowed, it's been allowed to fester for so long, so much so that nobody longer even wants to bother with it. They don't want to question it. They just have to, like, go about their lives, and it's super, it's just so sad because their anxiety increases, their property value decreases, and, you know, meanwhile, here the county and San Diego care more about forcing inequitable bike lanes used by a tiny fraction of people. You gonna interrupt me, Tara? While pouring millions into projects that do nothing for the residents, who are literally being poisoned. So again, such betrayal, such a circus, such a show, such a...
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reimer, that concludes our request for public comment on the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we take a vote, I want to thank the vast majority of our public commenters for keeping your, your comments relevant to the items on the agenda. I also want to thank County Council for your legal guidance on how we can ensure that these meetings are fair, protect free speech, public participation, political engagement, maintain a respectful environment here in our chambers, and ensure that the conversation is directly relevant to matters within our jurisdiction and that are on our agenda today. So thank you very much to our acting County Council. With that, we have a motion by Supervisor Montgomery-Steph and a second by Supervisor Geary. Seeing no request for comment from my colleagues, we will now take a vote.
And Chair Lawson Reimer, that motion passes unanimously, noting for the record that Supervisor Desmond registered a no vote on item 4 and on item 7, and again, item 9 was withdrawn.
Okay, thank you very much. So we now move on to discussion item 13. I imagine you're ready, Andrew. This is item Filling the Vacancy of the San Diego County elective office of treasure tax collector applicant interviews. So I will begin by handing the floor to our clerk, Andrew, for a presentation.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reimer. And as the board begins the discussion items, I would do want to note for the record, for the public and the board, that Supervisor Anderson has withdrawn item 16, so we will still take public comment on the item, but no action by the board is required since the author of the board letter has withdrawn the agenda item. Again, item 16 has been withdrawn by Supervisor Anderson. I also want to note that Supervisor Anderson has given me a statement to read for this item. In fairness to the candidate, Supervisor Anderson does not believe he should participate in the treasure tax collector approval process. He believes his colleagues will handle this process well without his participation. Supervisor Anderson is considering running for the treasure tax collector position and therefore is recusing himself from the item, and I will note that he has left the room. And with that...
Andrew, why don't we wait a moment or two while we get settled? If folks can take their seats, unless you're waiting to sign up. Okay? Great, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reimer, members of the board. The item before you today is the next phase of the process to fill the treasure tax collector vacancy following the retirement of Dan McAllister. Today has been set aside for the board to conduct applicant interviews, and I'll provide a brief background before the board begins the interviews. As described at the August 26, 2025 Board of Supervisors General Legislative Session, the San Diego County Charter provides the authority for the Board of Supervisors to fill by appointment the vacancy of the elected treasure tax collector. The county's charter requires the board to fill this vacancy by appointment. The individual appointed will hold office until the election of a successor. The next election would be November 3, 2026. Board Policy A105 entitled Filling Vacancies in elective offices prescribes the process. This slide shows the board's approval timeline for the process. The application process, application period began on August 27 and was open for 26 days. Applications were due by Monday, September 22 before 12 noon. Today, the board will interview all qualified applicants. Applicants will be given three minutes to make a presentation. After that, the board will have an opportunity to ask questions of applicants, and the public will also have an opportunity to speak. The board may then select and appoint one of the qualified applicants, or select a pool of finalists to move on to a second round at a later meeting. If an individual is selected today, they will immediately begin the background process. It is anticipated that the appointee will be sworn in following passing the county's standard medical exam and a full background investigation. There are several requirements to apply for the treasure tax collector position. Applicants must be a registered voter and a citizen of the United States. They must meet the experience requirements to be a treasure tax collector, which I'll describe in the next slide. Applicants must not have been convicted of any crime that would disqualify them from holding elected office. And the selected applicant must be able to assume the position within 20 business days following the selection by the board. These are the requirements outlined in the county's administrative code for a person to be eligible to serve as treasure tax collector. The individual must meet at least one of these requirements: at least three years' experience in a senior financial management role in a public agency, have the educational background, or certification as CPA, Chartered Financial Analyst, or Certified Cash Manager. Applications were available online. The application required applicants disclose their residence for the past five years, a written statement outlining their qualifications, and a statement asking why they wish to be appointed. Applicants included a resume and a statement of economic interest or Form 700. This is a summary of the outreach that was conducted, which included print publications, physical postings at county facilities, and social media. My office received 11 applications. Two of the applicants have withdrawn their applications. The remaining nine applicants are present today. For today, it is recommended that the board hear from each applicant. Again, applicants will be given three minutes to make a presentation. Then we'll hear from members of the public that wish to speak. After public comment, each supervisor may ask questions of any applicant. Finally, we'll move on to the selection process. Supervisors will select one applicant for appointment today, or may select up to five finalists. Supervisors will sign the ballot and return it to me. I will tabulate the ballots and publicly announce the results. An applicant must receive at least three votes to be appointed or move on to the finalist round. Any ties will be broken by subsequent votes among only the applicants that tied. And with that, Chair Lawson Reimer happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we get started with the interviews from the applicants, the candidate interviews, I wanted to make a motion of to waive Board Policy A105 for the limited purpose of amending the selection process as follows: that the board can select up to four finalists today following the voting and tie-breaking procedures, except that each supervisor will cast only up to four votes for the initial selection instead of five, and further direct the CAO to coordinate established parameters and host a community meeting on October 30, 2025, to allow the community an opportunity to meet the candidates selected as finalists and to hear introductory remarks and ask questions. Direct the CAO to provide a summary of the community feedback and input to the board, and direct the finalists' return to the Board of Supervisors on November 4, 2025 for consideration and final action. And I'm making this amendment, proposing this amendment today based on the feedback from many members of the public who wanted additional time to get to meet the applicants themselves, and also, given that we have nine, it didn't seem wise to continue five to the finalist round, seemed more than necessary, so limiting that to four. But if, so that's my motion. If there's a second, we can vote on that now before we're going forward with candidate interviews, or if there's any questions or discussions. Okay. Thank you, Chair Protam-Gary. If there's any questions, discussions, yes, please.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, it's the first time I've heard it, and don't have it written in front of me, so you want to send four, you want to pick four people today and then send it up for public review and, or whatever the process, and then to come back? When was that in?
Yeah, so the current policy says that if we can't all agree today, then we would have five that would go to finalist round. So the first part of my proposal is to say, hey, that's too many. We've got only nine folks, so let's do four and not five to the finalist round.
And then do you want to choose out of that four today, or we're just going to choose, choose those four and not the one?
No, the idea would be to choose four, our four finalists today, and then those go to a community forum that we're asking the CAO to organize on the 30th of October. I received some community feedback that they would like an opportunity to, you know, better, to meet the candidates in contexts that obviously is not really available right now. They can't ask those kinds of questions. It's really up to the board.
So I'm going to come back to... So I'm going to come back to.
And then they come back at the November 4 board meeting for us to make a final decision.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand what you're proposing. Thank you.
Yep. We have a motion on the floor in a second. No further comments. We can take a vote before we go to candidate interviews.
And Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So we now begin with the candidate interviews, and Andrew will call everyone forward.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. I'd like to invite forward our first applicant, Michael Aviles. And again, you'll have three minutes to address the board. I'll ask you to please state your name and please self-regulate your time using the timer in the podium. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Michael Aviles.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and members of the community. My name is Michael Aviles, and I'm honored to be here today as candidate for the Office of County Treasure Tax Collector. I come to you with more than eight years of experience in public finance, currently serving as the Chief Business Officer for a local school district. In that role, I am entrusted with managing multimillion-dollar budgets, overseeing general funds, developer fees, and community facilities funds. Every dollar I manage represents a promise to our taxpayers, and I've built my career on ensuring those funds are stewardied with transparency, accountability, and integrity. What I believe sets me apart is not only my financial expertise, but also my perspective. I grew up in an unincorporated area of San Diego, and outside of a year in Germany and four years in Northern California for college, I've called San Diego County home. I currently work in a small rural district in Northern San Diego County where resources are scarce and every expenditure carries weight. At the same time, I live here in the city and I understand the complex needs of larger, more urban communities. That dual perspective allows me to balance fiscal prudence with the recognition that our county is not one size fits all. Our communities deserve representation that reflects their diverse realities. But technical skills and financial acumen, while essential, are not enough. Leadership in this office requires something deeper: the ability to build a culture of trust, respect, and service. In my district, we operate by a simple motto: until the last moment, until the last child we serve, we lead, we grow. That spirit of servant leadership guides me in every decision I make. It means putting people first, leading with integrity, and ensuring public service truly serves the public. If entrusted with this office, I will bring not only proven financial management, but also the commitment to foster a culture of accountability, professionalism, and respect. The Treasure Tax Collector's Office is more than a place where taxes are collected, it's a place where trust is either built or broken, and my goal is to build that trust every single day. Supervisors, this role is one of immense responsibility. Taxpayers expect their funds to be protected, invested wisely, and reported transparently, and I'm ready to meet that responsibility. I offer you experience, perspective, and a philosophy of servant leadership that puts the community first. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite forward David Baker.
Good morning, Chair Lawson Reamer and members of the board. My name's David Baker, and I think the number of the day today is three. And I say that because within the next three minutes, I'd like to discuss three major areas of the treasure tax collector's responsibility, three critical changes to TTC's work and the services that we provide, and three points to my leadership to ensure progressive continuity, continued public trust, and success for our team. And I'd be remiss not to give a quick shout out to my triplet, so. So with almost 23 years of the county of San Diego, all with the TTC in the last seven years as chief deputy, overseeing all the tax collection-related operations and the statutory duties, collecting over $9 billion annually and having one of the highest collection rates in the state, I also oversee the county's nationally-recognized $2.7 billion deferred compensation program. I'm a fiduciary, and I've served on the investment committee for a number of years, and this outstanding product serves, outstanding program serves over 30,000 current and retired county participants. And for the county pool, prior to joining County of San Diego, I worked for over a decade in investment banks in Tokyo and London with a focus in bond placements and risk management. And with this experience, education, and oversight and of a multi-billion dollar program, I believe I have the, I can oversee the pool activities and serve in the TTC's role at the SD Sierra Board of Retirement. But over the next, next year, TTC will face three critical challenges that will transform how we work, serve the public, and provide ongoing excellent customer service for years to come. First, I anticipate the implementation of the Integrated Property Tax System, or the IPTS system, to support our department's collections, and it will replace our legacy mainframe system that we've worked out of for decades. I serve as an executive sponsor on that project, and I'm deeply invested in its success, and it will require good communication, ongoing training and refinement, and unwavering support of our, of our incredible staff. Next, we'll be strengthening our critical payment processing operations by moving to a new secure permanent location, and we'll also implement a new complex payment processing system, and this too will require strong institutional knowledge and careful change management similar to IPTS. Finally, we'll be transitioning to a new service provider for our deferred compensation program, and with this and other recent changes, we'll save over $10 million annually, and we'll be able to provide even greater planned services and improve the retirement readiness of our participants. The future is bright for TTC. My vision for success is grounded in transparent communication, leading with empathy and respect, and empowering our staff. Because the success of the TTC over the next year relies not just on these new systems and new processes, but on the collective efforts of our incredibly talented team. We're ready and we're excited about the challenge ahead, and it would be an honor to serve in this position for the interim. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite forward Lawrence or Larry Cohen.
It's an honor to be here today to speak with you about the future of the Treasure Tax Collector's Office, a department that safeguards billions of dollars in annual tax collections, billions in an investment pool every year, and also serves on the San Diego Sierra Retirement Board. This office ensures that our schools are funded, our infrastructure is supported, and the taxpayers can trust that every dollar collected is managed responsibly. Now, we're fortunate to have a strong slate of candidates today with lots of valuable experience, and I hope that I can earn your confidence to lead this office into the future. My career demonstrates a rare blend of financial experience, including an MBA, government experience, and proven leadership. In the private sector, I've managed a 30 million-plus business line in a global life science Fortune 100 company. I've personally led international teams of up to 50 people across borders, balancing complex budgets, making disciplined investment decisions, and delivering results in a highly regulated environment. These skills, financial and accounting discipline, risk management, and people leadership, are precisely what is required to safeguard your multi-billion dollar investment pool and to successfully lead 179-plus employees in this very critical department. Now, I also bring federal policy expertise. For more than five years, I have been serving as a senior policy advisor and chief of staff to Congressman Juan Vargas in the House of Representatives, who sits on the Financial Services Committee, which oversees banking, pensions, and securities law. I, along with my senior colleagues and senior staff, have helped draft aspects of the American Rescue Plan that stabilize multi-employer pension funds, protecting the retirement security of millions of Americans. This is no small feat with big oversight at a very high level. I also contributed to legislation that expanded ESD investment practices aligning public funds with long-term sustainability and resilience. This dual perspective, private sector financial accounting and management coupled with federal policy design, gives me a unique understanding of how county decisions connect to broader markets, regulations, and the daily lives of working families. This office is a public trust. Taxpayers and employees deserve transparency, accountability, and leadership that listens. At the end of the day, this office is about the people: the family making their property tax payment, their retiree counting on a stable pension, and the county employee who comes to work every day proud to serve the public. I bring the discipline of a Fortune 100 executive, but the insight of a senior congressional advisor, and the integrity of a lifelong public servant. I'm committed to ensuring every taxpayer, employee, and every community in San Diego feel seen, respected, heard, and served. I thank you for your time, and I hope to earn your support.
Thank you. Our next applicant will be Carolyn or Carrie Ford.
Hi, County Board of Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to let me present to you. My name's Carrie Ford. I'm a born and raised San Diego native. Since you all have my resume, I won't dive too much into that, but I'll briefly summarize it. I received my bachelor's degree in business finance from SDSU in 2007, where I had extensive education on investing and financial analysis. I joined the workforce in accounting and finance, where I started and grew my own accounting and CFO consulting business. Here, I've worked with many large and small nonprofits within San Diego, the majority of them being business owners and board members in this county. After investing in San Diego County myself through real estate, I decided to further my education and became a licensed real estate agent in 2021. My real estate education has helped solidify the knowledge needed to explain to these county citizens the property tax and supplemental tax bills. Further, my accounting experience filing unsecured property tax bills for clients based on the financials I have personally prepared for them helps bridge the gap between business owners and the county on educating San Diego citizens as to why they are paying this tax. Having my own investment properties in San Diego County, I am also familiar with filing TOT tax, which is Transit Occupancy Tax, of which this office collects itself. I have hands-on knowledge of what citizens are required to follow since, or required to file, since I have filed it myself, and can bridge that gap in communication between this office and the citizens. As my accounting business grew, I craved further knowledge and decided to pursue my master's degree. In 2023, I graduated with a master's in accounting emphasis in tax, again as a proud Aztec from San Diego State University. I'm currently studying and sitting for my CPA exam, the first test scheduled two weeks into October. My work experience managing employees is far too much to go into detail within three minutes, but I encourage you to review my resume and feedback upward and downward on my LinkedIn profile. My management style is one of an open door. One of my favorite things about managing new accountants and financial professionals is to see that light bulb go off when they start to love this industry as much as I do. In summary, my education experience within finance, accounting, tax, and real estate aligns perfectly with this position and what I can offer citizens. My almost two decades of hands-on experience with San Diego business owners and board members and my own personal investments in this county only help solidify what I have to offer this office. Thank you for your opportunity and time to present.
Thank you. Our next applicant is Gregory Hodosovich.
I'm Greg Hodosovich, Dr. Greg Hodosovich, but people call me Greg. I'm a certified internal auditor and certified information systems auditor. I have been taking, I've been working dedicated to finance, accounting, and information technology systems. That's been part of my career. I've been taking care of millions and in some cases billions of other people money. I worked with a telecom company, serving over 800,000 customers, including monthly billing, technical support, and customer service. My motivation is to provide public service to the community that has been, that has long supported me and my family. The Treasure Tax Collection Office has delivered consistent tax collection services, but it now faces dual challenges: operational inefficiency driven by legacy software, which causes 45-minute delays for the callers to the office, and very expensive costly paper billing. They need, and they need to use their platform to address the rising cost of living and environmental issues heavily impacting the county's underserved population. I am concerned about the scheduled go-live of a new tax collection system next month. David Baker mentioned about that. That new system was originally to support both departments: tax collection and assessor. But tax assessor and his staff concluded that the personnel who came, who delivered that system was unable to meet their requirements. As a result, the tax collector proceeded with developing its own standalone system, hoping to integrate it with assessor's office. To my knowledge, the assessor's department is now seeking a different solution. Proceeding with a standalone system that is not tightly integrated with assessors create a material risk to the county's cash flow. You may remember how Obama key implementation was hampered by unstable website and related software. Industry best practices suggest that major migration takes place during off-peak periods to minimize risk and possible disruption. To mitigate this risk, deferring that system launch to a later time would be beneficial to protect stability and integrity of a tax collection system. Thank you. If there are any questions, I'm.
Thank you. Our next applicant is Shirley Nakawatashi.
Out of the nine candidates running for the San Diego County Treasurer Tax Collector, I'm the only certified public accountant. That means I'm the only one licensed by the state of California to practice accountancy and to issue audits. As a CPA, I'm bound by a strict code of conduct that emphasizes ethics, accuracy, and responsibilities. Principles have upheld throughout my career. For nearly four decades, I've dedicated myself to financial stewardship. I founded and grew a CPA firm right here in San Diego, serving thousands of individuals, families, and businesses. I've helped them navigate complex financial landscapes with integrity and expertise. My vision for the Treasure Tax Collector's Office is clear: to modernize services, streamline processes, and always put the taxpayer first. For example, the upcoming October launch of the new Integrated Property Tax System, this is a vital step in replacing our old mainframe technology that's been holding us back for too long. I'll work tirelessly to ensure this upgrade reduces wait times at our offices, simplifies online payments, and delivers faster, more accessible services for everyone, from homeowners to business owners. As a public face of the county, our office must always reflect respect and trust for the taxpayers we serve. Every interaction should build confidence with exceptional customer service. I also bring proven leadership from both the public and private sectors. Currently, I serve as treasurer for the San Diego County Capital Asset Leasing Corporation. Over the years, I've been entrusted as treasurer for the Imperial Beach Chamber of Commerce, for the Boys and Girls Club, for the Kiwanis Club, and the San Diego Regional Center, which has a budget of just over $1 billion. Additionally, as a CPA, I've supported local business improvement districts and public water districts, ensuring their finances are sound and compliant. This role just isn't about the technical skills to manage billions in taxpayer funds. It's all about communicating clearly with the public, acting with complete transparency, and serving with unshakable integrity. In a time when trust in government is more important than ever, these qualities matter. That's why I'm going to expand outreach programs and create more feedback channels, giving our community a real voice in how we deliver services, whether through town halls, online surveys, or direct engagement. Community input will always shape our operations. With my extensive experience, strong leadership, and deep commitment to public service, I'm ready to make the San Diego County Treasurer Tax Collector's Office modern, efficient, and always centered on the taxpayer. I'd be honored to earn your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite forward Christian Peacock.
Morning, Chair Lawson Reamer and Board of Supervisors. I'm here to confirm my interest in becoming the next treasurer tax collector. I currently serve as the treasurer for the City of. I currently serve as the Treasurer for the City of Carlsbad, where I oversee and manage a $1 billion investment portfolio. Since being elected office at the City of Carlsbad, I focused on transparency, accountability, and efficiency. I've corrected gaps in the investment policy and brought it in line with state code. I discovered and disclosed impermissible investments and sought to get those resolved at no cost to the city. I started the city's first investment review board, bringing additional transparency to the citizens, and recently was, recently earned the California Certified Municipal Treasurer's Designation, which is something that just a few treasurers in the state have earned. And really, it just, it highlights my commitment to best practices and to continuing education in the field of public finance. I graduated magna cum laude with a degree in business administration and an emphasis in international finance from the University of Southern California. I spent 10 years in corporate finance, and then another 20 years owning and operating several successful small businesses. So it's really that combination of public and private experience that I want to bring to the county. Right now, the county's got 99% collection rate. They have a AAA-rated investment pool. So it's not like, you know, there's a bunch of things broken that need to be fixed here. What I want to do is take what's working and make it better, focusing on efficiency, technology, and transparency. And so what does that look like? What does that mean? That means improving customer service without additional cost. It means improving processes through the use of technology and innovation, and keeping residents clearly informed about how their money's being managed at all times. You know, in a time of political division, it's important, I think, that this office is not, and instead remain grounded in integrity, service, and performance. So if selected to be the next Treasurer Tax Collector, I'll continue to ask hard questions. I'll continue to act with transparency. So I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Our next applicant is Rafi Edward Tricky Jr.
Good morning, Chair Lawson Remer and Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp and the other members of the Board of Supervisors. It's a great pleasure and honor to be here. I'm Rafe Tricky. I find the potential for service as Treasurer Tax Collector very compelling. At this point in my career and the life of my family, I'm committed to providing leadership service where I have the genuine opportunity to make a positive and enduring difference. I believe this is possible through service as the County of San Diego's Treasurer Tax Collector. As the City of Oceanside City Treasurer, I work collaboratively and successfully with the members of the County Treasurer Tax Collector's Leadership Team. That was in the past. If selected, I look forward to working with them again. I thought they were a remarkable team of people. I'm a dedicated financial administrator who has worked extensively in governance, public service, and nonprofit leadership. I've led institutions, departments, and programs in which I've supervised from a handful to scores of employees, including support staff and administrators. I've worked hand-in-hand with legislators, other appointed and elected government officials, tribal leaders, elected and appointed boards, and citizen oversight committee. For example, the Oceanside Citizen Investment Oversight Committee, which I dramatically expanded and diversified during my tenure as Oceanside City Treasurer. I hold an earned doctorate from UC San Diego, a master of international affairs degree from Columbia University in the City of New York, a master of science degree from the University of Southern California, and a bachelor's degree in political science and history from UC Santa Barbara. So my interest in serving as San Diego County's Treasurer Tax Collector flows solely from my desire to provide needed expertise and assistance in an area in which I possess expertise and a record of success. I would bring to this important financial services and investment fund leadership position 30 years of investment policy development, investment portfolio management, multimillion-dollar budget development and management, and institutional finances management experience. I've served as an institutional president and CEO, led financial services operations, developed investment policies, and managed multimillion-dollar investment portfolios. So my philosophy concerning the investment fund and the county's pool in particular is that there are three objectives, and these are driven by statute: protect and manage principal monies in compliance with all applicable federal and state and local laws; ensure ample liquidity to meet budgeted expenditures for fund participants; and generate maximum investment income return on investment while maintaining prudent risk management and the noted required liquidity. My goals include retaining and developing current TTT staff and striving for a 100% tax collection, although I don't think 99% is too bad, and I am concerted, committed to serve until January of 2027. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final applicant is Deetra Williams.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Deetra Williams. I am a proven leader who has a passion for the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office. As you can see from my resume, I have the experience, knowledge, and expertise that spans from departmental personnel officer to manager in the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office with the last 18, 13 years as a tax manager across all three divisions. For the role of interim Treasurer Tax Collector's Office, I have a vision to carry forward a highly functioning workforce that has brought us great success. To successfully perform in this position, I have acquired departmental knowledge, I have established relationships with stakeholders, and earned the support of the staff. Over the next 18 months, we are facing three challenges. One, maintaining the stability of the county treasury pool. Two, ensuring that the 99% property tax collection rate is maintained. And three, retaining the talented staff that has driven the success of the department. The treasury pool is always facing risks that may be within our control or not. Risks that we won't be able to control are related to liquidities, securities, and funding from the state and federal government to the pool participants. I am proud that we have a team in treasury that is familiar with these risks and experienced in mitigating them, and I intend to continue to support them. We are facing uncertain economic times that will impact our taxpayers. With the risk of inflation, business loss, and rising unemployment, some of our taxpayers may not be able to pay their property tax bills. If the collection rate is reduced, there will be less funding to invest and provide services to the citizens of San Diego County. I am so proud that we have a team in tax collection that is resilient and experienced with economic uncertainty. And with a strong leader, we can get through tough times. To succeed, we must have a strong workforce. If there's a drastic change in leadership, there is the risk of losing talented staff whose values may not align with the new leader. I'm excited to lead a TTC team that is strongly supportive and ready to propel TTC into the future. I am proud and I am passionate about fostering a culture that embodies the guiding principles of being kind, curious, bold, and doing the right thing. By appointing me, a proven leader, I can assure you that TTC will continue to overcome the challenges and be prepared for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Remer, that concludes the three-minute presentations from each of the applicants that are here today.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you so much to all of our applicants for stepping up. This is obviously an incredibly important position for our community, for so many of our investments, and I just really appreciate the commitment to public service and every one of you who stepped forward today to put yourself out. I know how hard it is to do that, and it's vulnerable, and it's, you know, you're stepping forward and saying, please choose me. So thank you for, for being vulnerable and for stepping forward. So what we have to do kind of next is we have an opportunity for public comment, and then we have, we also have an opportunity for board members to ask questions of all the candidates, of any specific candidate, of every candidate, any candidate, and also for the board to have a conversation. So again, we've got public comment, we've got questions from board members to candidates, board member discussion, and a vote. So what I would like to do is ask before we go to public comment, if at this time, any of my colleagues have any initial questions that were sparked by any of the candidate statements? If not, we will go to public comment, and then we will have obviously opportunity for those questions after. But I do want to give my colleagues, if anyone has any initial questions that were raised by any of the candidate statements, to, this is a perfectly good opportunity to ask them if anyone has any questions. Okay. So right as I say, I'll wait. Okay, everyone looks, any, any questions at this time?
Initial?
Sorry, I'll say it again. So just to restate, so we will have a public comment, and after public comment, we will have an opportunity for all of us board members to ask questions of the candidates, and then we'll have a board discussion. But what I did ask is if any of you have any initial comments, or sorry, I should say, any initial questions for any of the candidates before we go to public comment, if anything was immediate. Okay, great. So we'll go to public comment, and given the amount of a kind of conversation and discussion left, I do imagine we will probably break for lunch somewhere in the middle. I'll try to find a breakpoint that makes sense. So let's go ahead and start with public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Remer. We have 17 requests to speak, 11 in person, and six requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we did not receive any ecomments on this item. Any individuals that requested to speak on item 13 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you'll have one minute to address the board, and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'll be calling you in groups of three, so again, I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals. Loretta Ayufiam, Sampson Endemarium, and Veronica Salas. I apologize for mispronouncing names. Welcome, please come forward. And come on up to the podium, please. Thank you. And if you can adjust the mic to your height.
Good morning. My name is Loretta Ayufiam, and I'm here to speak on behalf of applicants David Baker and Deetra Williams. The Treasurer Tax Collector's Office needs someone in the upcoming months before the formal election that we know already have leadership skills and extensive knowledge of how the office works. You will see in their resumes the dedication they've both shown to the County of San Diego, 20-plus years in the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office each. You will see that they're not only, they do not only have the education, but they also have the hands-on experience and knowledge in all the different aspects of the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office. And they have one very valuable thing also. They have the utmost respect and trust of TT staff. And if there are two individuals who understand that the noblest motive is the public good, it's David Baker and Deetra Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning or afternoon, County Board members. My name is Sampson Endemarium. As a resident of San Diego for 35 years and a county employee for approximately 20 years, I want to strongly recommend David Baker and Deetra Williams for the County San Diego Treasurer Tax Collector position. Having collaborated with them for 20 years, I am confident their deep knowledge and proven track record will seamlessly support a department's current flow and ensure a smooth transition. Both David Baker and Deetra Williams have hands-on experience. Having steadily grown into leadership roles, they are very supportive and participative in all various tasks I go on with the department, from high collection to innovative upgrades and updates to our outdated processes and systems, such as the long-awaited IPTS, which will be launched in a few days, which will include both the Treasurer's Office and Audit Controller. The board can ask for better candidates who are key role players and have worked in frontline positions before gradually being promoted to a higher management role. In a time of budget constraint, it would be to the county's benefit.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers. Joy Briers, Lisa McClarty, and Noah Yi Yik.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Veronica Salas, and I'm an Admin Secretary III for the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office. I've been there for 15 years. I'm speaking during this, my personal break, because this is a decision very important to both me and to our department. I'd like to express my support for appointing a qualified internal candidate to serve as an interim tax, Treasurer Tax Collector. I urge you to give strong consideration to appointing a current qualified employee such as David Baker or Deetra Williams, since both have already demonstrated leadership and expertise in the department. This is an important leadership decision, and I believe choosing someone who already stands, who understands the office, the staff, and the financial responsibilities, which will help serve the county and our constituents best. Thank you for your consideration, and God bless you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Joy Briers. I'm an Administrative Secretary III in the Executive Office of the Treasury Tax Collector. I want to emphasize that I'm speaking during my personal break, which I hope demonstrates how important this matter is to me as an integral part of the department. The decision before us carries real weight. Appointing the tax collector from within our department provides not only stability, but also a depth of experience that simply cannot be matched by bringing in someone new. David Baker and Deetra Williams have already shown the knowledge, consistency, and trust required to perform effectively in this role. By choosing from within, we safeguard continuity, reduce unnecessary risk, and strengthen the long-term success of both the department and the community we serve. Stability and experience are not just advantages, they are necessities. I urge you to act with foresight and confidence by appointing the tax collector from within our department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Chair Lawson Remer, members of the board. I'm Lisa McClarty, a very longtime resident of San Diego. I was six years old when I first received county services. My young, single mom applied for and got a grant for me to get eye surgery because I have Bell's palsy. This was much-needed surgery that I wouldn't have gotten without Health and Human Services and that important grant. I believe in the services and the programs the county provides. I was delighted to get a job with the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office several years ago, and I know that the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office plays a key role in collecting tax dollars that fund those important programs and services. I continue to believe in the work that the county does, and because of that, I took time off to speak with you this morning in support of my colleagues David Baker and Deetra Williams. Before coming to the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office, I worked for some of the largest financial institutions in the United States. Having worked now with both David and Deetra for several years, I know them to be highly capable, passionate, and respected leaders.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, allegedly Audra, Crystal Irving, and Mark.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Noah Yi Yik. I'm a researcher and policy advocate with the Center on Policy Initiatives and a convener of the San Diego Community Budget Alliance. This position shapes how billions of public dollars are invested, how property taxes are collected, and whether San Diegans are treated with dignity and fairness. Centering equity in this office means multilingual outreach, fair payment options, and people-first investments. I was going to stand here today urging you all to include more community outreach and input through this process or in this process. Instead, I'm really happy to be here thanking you for approving a process that will allow San Diegans to learn about the position, hear from candidates, and share feedback. This is about more than filling a vacancy. It is about building trust, practicing transparency, and making sure San Diegans have a voice in this decision. So thank you very much for adopting a transparent, community-involved process for appointing the next Treasurer Tax Collector.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Crystal Irving, President of CIU Local 221, and our members serve at the Treasurer Tax Collector Office. We support the process that you've approved to maximize community engagement and input during this appointment process. This office directly impacts how county invest billions of dollars that shape our communities, and we need strong and fair leadership that supports the workers who provide these quality services. Workers and community members deserve the opportunity to. Workers and community members deserve the opportunity to understand the role and the candidates being considered, their vision and values, and provide input before a final decision is made. Our hope is that this is an opportunity for the public to learn about the responsibilities and the impact of this important office, and we look forward to learning more about the applicants and engaging in this process. And of course, please clock that I am supportive of the leadership of Vice Chair Monica Montgomery Stepp. Thank you for how you show up every day for the community and how you always engage sincerely with our membership even when our conversations are tough. So thank you, Vice Chair, and thank you to all the supervisors for this work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark, I think that you've admitted a requirement that should be included. The tax collector will be collecting the trash tax, which is, as one of the council people stated, he refused to support it because it literally, if you don't pay your electric bill, your electricity gets cut off. You don't pay your trash, thousands of old people's houses will be taken. It's unconstitutional. He does do an oath of office. Furthermore, Prop 218 specifically states that no fee or charge can be passed or implemented without a majority vote of the property owners in the affected area, and there is no way for, oh, and it also mentions about with a for or against vote. There is no ballot. There is no for vote in, in it. You're not directed toward it. It's total malfeasance. Shola Kada and Shani Lo Rivera committed malfeasance, and no one that does this job should implement that.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite the remaining speakers in person, John Brady and Julie Porter.
My person uses the name Audra, robbing Peter to pay Paul. This is why Jesus flipped the tables, because it's a den of thieves. That's what you guys are. It's so sad, because it doesn't matter who you pick, this is somebody that's going to be taking homes from people because they can't afford to, you know, pay to live in the world that you guys have created by always increasing things, you know, taking our money and wasting it, and then going, we need more just to provide the services. We already gave people pay raises, but we're going to need some more money just to provide the services that you guys think that we're going to provide. And all these socialist services that, you know, are pretended to be provided or like paid for by the people, and then it's like, you give them raises just so they can give that money back to you. It's just really sad to see that, like, somebody in there should be like, I am not going to take any of these people's homes. I'm going to make sure that we do something to make sure they can stay in their home instead of just taking it because we increased something and they can't afford to pay it. Good job.
I want to call for John Brady and Julie Porter. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will begin with our first caller.
Fun swallow here. Yay, I love being the first one. Okay, so to the tax collectors applying, okay, from the moment we breathe, our very first breath, a ledger is opened, a lifelong bet, cradled to coffin, the numbers don't lie, we're measured, we're billed until the day we die. They tax our food, they tax our land, they tax the sweat of our working hands. They tax the rain, they tax the sun, they tax the many to enrich the ones. They tax our trash, it folds into property dues. Can't pay that? You don't get to choose. Miss a payment? They'll make it known. Adios, family. Adios, home. And still, they smile with polished disguise, calling it service when it's theft in our eyes. Applicants line up eager to serve, but do you have courage or just the nerve? For this job, it's not about ink and math, it's about walking corruption's path. Will you?
We'll hear from the next caller.
It's not specific candidates, all of them. I hope they do not approve of your GFOA-style reducing emergency fund or taking homes for non-payment of taxes, which are illegal anyway. There are so many important things going on. Filling the office of tax collector for a two-year or so term deserves more than just two weeks to search for alternatives to the usual political or in-house appointments. With all of the places you're advertising for the position in the communications plan, a two-week window to vet all these choices is ridiculous. There is a lot to be said for being cautious while making temporary appointments, given how many politicians...
We'll hear from the next caller.
Sixty seconds to speak to nine candidates, and six seconds of input, it's truth. This is a shreds trade. The three purple puezers are just going to pick their political union minions who allow Paloma's property tax delinquency. I demand a tax collector that will actually collect the taxes owed for everyone equally. Paloma's unoccupied condo in Imperial Beach needs to be defaulted on. Joe recusing himself is a Rhino cop-out. Michael Abloh might have a potential arrest record. David Baker has experience and believes in collections. Lawrence is a political puppet of Juan Vargas and has global, not local, experience. Carrie Ford is nice, but still studying. Greg is an auditor, but no thanks. Shirley is a well-known qualified individual who Paloma has a bias against. Christian Peacock is Carlsbad's treasurer, but their budget is mismanaged, wasted on dangerous roundabouts and traffic circles. Rafey Tricky has a 100% political philosophy. Dietrich Williams sounds like a TDS sufferer who will keep letting Paloma off until Monica's racist DIE quota. Who will support Prop 13 and collect from Paloma? I recommend Shirley or David, who actually know what the job requires. Imagine that.
Thank you. We'll hear from the final caller.
How you guys doing? I'll go ahead and be nice right now, but if you go ahead and interrupt me again, I have several words that I could be referring to each and every single one of you of. Now, regarding your select, you're not going to pick the person that the county employees want, you know, someone that knows the system and all that stuff. You're going to choose a union person, aren't you? There's three of you. You guys already know who you're going to choose. This is just a checkmark. This is the same thing that took place at the Register of Voters when we decided to hire a person that was under investigation for voter tampering. And when he came over here, he decided to move us to a vote-by-mail system, which I vocally said was a bad idea, and which he fired me over and came up with bullshit reasons over calculators. And then I was put on hold for, what, seven years? And then you guys gave me disability, and then you granted me a restraining order?
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Rimmer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. It's 12, a little after 12:10. So I think what we'll do is we'll recess for lunch. We'll be back. Does 1 o'clock work for my colleagues? Is that plenty of time? Okay, we'll be back by 1, and let's all be back at 1. Thanks.